Good afternoon. I call to the order the closed session meeting of the Mayor and City Council at 3:01 PM. Welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you to those viewing remotely. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Barra?
Present.
Mayor Protim?
Here.
Councilmember Sharette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran.
Here. Thank you. Moving on to public comments for closed session. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments for closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Item B under the closed session agenda, there's two cases of significant exposure litigation. One is related to Mandeville, the other is related to some outstanding property taxes on the Regal Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now convene to close... Oh, yes.
Just for the record, I'll be recusing myself from Items C and D on tonight's closed session.
Okay. Thank you, Council.
Good evening. Welcome, and thank you for being here, and thank you to those viewing remotely. I call to order this joint regular meeting of the Mayor and City Council, and the Mayor and City Council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of San Bernardino, the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority at 5:07 PM. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Barra?
Present.
Mayor Protim?
Here.
Councilmember Sharette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
And Mayor Tran.
Here. Thank you. We will now move on to invocation and pledge. Pastor Paul E. Jones from Independent Trinity Benjamin E. Jones Community Resource will lead tonight's invocation. Please approach the podium at this time. And Selena Zamu Dio from Marshall Elementary will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen.
Please rise.
Thank you. Gracious Father, we come before you, oh God, with humble presence, just thanking you for another day that you kept us, oh God. How you woke us up this morning and started us on our way. Dear God, we ask you to come into this meeting, oh God, invoke your presence right now. God, give us more wisdom, more knowledge, to be able to do the ministry inside of San Bernardino. God, we thank God for every last one of the council people, our mayor, oh God, even the people that are here. Just ask you to bless each and every one of them, oh God. Let your anointing fill the room upon today. In Jesus' name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jones, and thank you to Selena. Closed session report. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor and Council met and discussed the various items listed on the closed session agenda. There are no reportable actions this evening. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to presentations. We do have some modification. We do not have the San Bernardino Community College District at this agenda. It will come back, I believe, the next meeting. So we will move forward with the Citizen of the Month. There are two Citizen of the Month. I believe this is with Councilmember Ortiz. And Council, would you mind joining our Councilwoman Ortiz up to the front stage to honor the Citizen of the Month?
Andy and Johnny?
I'm doing nervous.
Okay. All right. Yeah, just breathe. This is the cool part of what we get to do. So tonight, I wanted to recognize two drastically different individuals, but both who carry so much passion for our community and are just outstanding residents in and of themselves. And the first I wanted to start off with is this amazing young man from San Bernardino High School, Andy Fuentes. And I had the pleasure of meeting him at the No Kings Rally, which was completely organized by him online. And regardless of where you stand politically in your beliefs, I think the most important thing is the supporting and recognition of our youth. Taking a stand and using their voice and their presence to make a difference, to find who they are in the midst of all of the things that are happening around them. And so it is truly an honor to recognize you for all of your outstanding efforts. Because I'm going to tell you something, as you prepare to become the future leader of the City of San Bernardino, more than likely President of the United States, putting yourself out in front of everybody is not something that even adults can do. And trust me, I know that. So you are heads and tails above a lot of people, and I am so utterly proud of you. So thank you for all that you're doing for our communities. Is there anything you want to say?
I'd like to thank my mom and my dad for getting me here. Without them, I wouldn't be able to get here. And it just, in these terrible times in our community where we see so much terrible things happening, being at the protest and Dr. Trezor Ortiz being there, it really gave me a sense of hope. And, you know, I'd also like to thank my grandpas in the audience, but I also like to thank my grandpa who is not here with us. He was a huge motivation for me, and he may not be here, but I know he's smiling down at me.
And so the next person is the one behind the scenes, truly the crime scenes that are going on in our city. And I wanted to recognize him because I've gotten over the last year and a half, two years, to know Johnny. And it is one of those unsung hero jobs, the things that nobody thinks about because while we're sleeping, while the horrible things that are happening, because of him, we don't necessarily have to wake up and see that. And nobody thinks twice about who's doing it. So what I love in recognizing Johnny is that he has a true heart for our community, to be there for us in a way that is almost nonexistent. But also, he did something really wonderful for one of my residents who needed an additional, like, type of cleaning, just for general purposes, at no charge. And at a time when people are at a disadvantage, at a time when, you know, there is so much hurt, Johnny is truly the heart of the nighttime in our city. And so I want to thank you for all that you do, and I want you to know that we see you, and I see you, even, you know, beyond what you do at night, okay? All right.
Thank you. Thank you. I can say something?
You can say something.
You sure?
You bet.
Okay. Thank you. There's so much where I can start with and say, there's... I put myself into the family's place. It's a tragedy when this happens, and it's even more a tragedy when the family gets to keep on reliving the trauma when they see it, when they go buy baseline or something, and they keep on reliving the trauma. And they came on to me to create a company that stops that, from stops the agony of families reliving trauma when they see an accident. When they go buy an accident, there's blood everywhere, and there's nobody to pick it up. And San Bernardino does care. If there is blood, they're one of the only cities in IE that does care. And them, and now I started, you know, with the Fabuloso and the Mop. Now I got two cities and three coming up. So I'm thankful, and I've been doing it for five years for you guys, and I'm proud. I don't talk to that much people, but when I do, I step into their place, and I just hope they don't get to see what I see. Thank you.
Let's give another round of applause for Andy Fuentes and Johnny Carrera. Thank you so much for all that you do for the City of San Bernardino. We have another presentation, actually, and we are going to move it from the consent item list, Council, and we need to, believe, take action on it first before we can have a presentation on this.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Yes, you can motion. So at this time, we are reordering the agenda, reviewing Consent Item Number 11.
Move to approve. I'll second.
There's the motion, and there's the second. It is to approve the $12,000 from Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. from the County of San Bernardino for Blair Park batting cage improvements. And we have Supervisor Joe Baca Jr., please come up on stage. Council, let's join. Oh, actually, I need to call for the votes first. I jumped it. Madam City Clerk?
So we have no public comments for this item, and I'll go ahead and take a voice vote. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barra?
Yes.
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Now we will start the presentation. Supervisor Joe Baca, please join us on stage. And we have the leak here. Please join us on stage as well.
Hello. Well, thank you. Good evening, City of San Bernardino, honorable mayor and guests. It's a pleasure to be here again at the City of San Bernardino, just a great place to live, a great place to raise a family. But more importantly, proud to support the city, do everything we can to do our small part from the County of San Bernardino. We've made significant investments in our parks here, probably totaling over, little over $5 million just in community parks right here in the City of San Bernardino. We've invested in Spiker Park, we've invested in Guttierras Park, La Placita Park, Guadalupe Park. And these are investments that we're just so proud of that can improve the quality of life in our community. And I know today's not a million-dollar investment, but it's a good investment for our kids and our families. And I just want to talk about how this project came about. So I was at an event at Ridgeline Little League, and I was approached by the president, Mr. Preston White, who was right behind me, and Preston goes, "Look, we need some help for our batting cage. We need some netting and some flooring to just improve for our kids, so our kids have a place to practice." So then, you know, our staff reached out to the San Bernardino City staff, had conversations, got some pricing, and found a good medium, which was a $12,000 investment, to try to put some protective netting, so the kids have a better place to practice, and, you know, a flooring, so the kids have better flooring, but really just giving them a place to practice. It's about taking pride, and I know the City of San Bernardino made significant investments in Blair Park and the Dodger Dream Field. It's just something we're so proud of. That's actually the third Dodger Dream Field in the, in San Bernardino County, which is a big deal. It's a big deal. Right there at Blair Park, the first one was in the City of Rialto, second one, City of Fontana, and the third one, right here in the City of San Bernardino. They have three of them in the City of San Bernardino. But it's our way of doing our small investment, and I want to thank, you know, Preston, the president, for bringing this idea forward. Want to thank San Bernardino City staff. But also want to thank the Mayor and Council for supporting this. And we did just a small little kickoff a few weeks ago. I want to thank, you know, Mayor Tran, Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Flores, Councilman Canas, for all being there to support this endeavor. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisors, we're here to present a check for $12,000 to the City of San Bernardino to give Ridgeline Little League a boost. Give them a round of applause. Congratulations, San Bernardino.
Thank you, Supervisor. Big round of applause for Supervisor Joe Baca, being a great partner to the City of San Bernardino, helping us tremendously to improve our parks and our families and our children. Thank you. We will now move on to public hearing. We will start off with Item Number Four. Appeal 25-07 for Conditioned Use Permit 23-01 and Public Convenience or Necessity 23-01. It is recommended that the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, take the following action. One, adopt Resolution Number 2025-380 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, denying Appeal 25-07, thereby upholding the Planning Commission's denial of Conditioned Use Permit 23-01 and Public Convenience or Necessity 23-01, and not align with the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off-sale beer and wine licensed within an existing approximately 1,434-square-foot Arco gas station and convenience store located at 189 West Highland Avenue, APN 0146-013-25 within the commercial general CG-1 zone, or, two, adopt Resolution Number 2025-381 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, approving Appeal 2507, thereby overturning the Planning Commission's denial of Conditioned Use Permit 23-01 and Public Convenience or Necessity 23-01 to allow the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off-sale beer and wine licensed within an existing approximately 1,434-square-foot Arco gas station and convenience store located at 189 West Highland Avenue, APN 0146-013-25 within the commercial general CG-1 zone. Item Number Four, Appeal 250-07 for Conditioned Use Permit 23-01 and Public Convenience or Necessity 23-01. Ward Two is a quasi-traditional hearing, and we will follow the procedural rules in accordance with Resolution Number 2018-88. I'm opening the hearing at 5:25. Any members of the public wishing to address this body or testify on this item, please stand and raise your hand to have the City Clerk administer the oath.
If I may, mayor, if I may, Councilmember Ibarra, are you prepared to make a decision tonight with an open mind, based only on the information in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Could city staff provide a presentation on this item? Staff will have 15 minutes to speak.
Madam mayor, members of the city council, Assistant Planner Angeline Mendoza will do the PowerPoint presentation. If there are any questions relative to the project, I will be here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors, city council members, and members of the public. My name is Angeline Mendoza, and I will be presenting Appeal 25-07 for conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01. The applicant is requesting that we uphold Appeal 25-07 to overturn the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01 for the request of a type 20 off-sale beer and wine license. This request that was denied took place at 189 West Highland Avenue on a parcel zone commercial general CG-1 that is approximately 0.38 acres. Here we see an aerial of the subject site itself with the surrounding context, which we see in the next slide here, that is primarily zone commercial and residential. Existing site conditions were confirmed during the planning commission hearing, which we see before you today, of the existing gas station and convenience store. Staff's denial and planning commission's ratification of the denial took an analysis of three various factors. First and foremost, using census tract data of subject census tract 0054.00, which has currently seven active off-sale licenses, for a census tract that has an allowance from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control of five off-sale licenses. This does not negate them from being able to apply for a license, instead, it triggered a public convenience or necessity process with the planning division. A second factor in staff's decision to deny the request for a type 20 was also in part to crime statistics that were requested from the police department of the city of San Bernardino, namely, at this particular reporting district, there were a total of 140 crimes, which exceeds the city average by 104.65%, which factored into staff's denial. Staff's denial was also evaluated for certain uses within a 500-feet distance from the subject property, two of which includes Iglesias de Restación San Bernardino and La Luz del Mundo, two places of worship within that 500-foot distance. In proximity of the site, within that 500-foot threshold, were two other alcohol outlets, Green Shack Marketplace and 7-Eleven, which were less than 100 linear feet away from our subject site. Although service stations may be considered for an exemption to distance requirements from specific sensitive uses that staff has outlined before, for, this is subject to, this can be subject to conditions of approval for the mitigation of potential effects of the public welfare, but staff's decision to recommend denial is based on the crime statistics from PD and proximity to other alcohol outlets in addition to the sensitive uses within 500 feet as the crow flies of the subject property. As a little bit of background, the item was initially heard as a type 20-1 license at the planning commission hearing of July 10, 2025. It was continued to August 12, 2025, but was instead heard for a type 20 off-sale beer and wine license. However, because staff's decision was not based on the type of license, rather that it is a new proposed alcohol outlet with the three underlying factors that staff has discussed, the planning commission adopted resolution number 2025-033, denying the request once again. On August 27 of this year, the applicant filed an application for the appeal that we have here before the mayor and city council. As such, staff does have two resolutions for you today. First and foremost, to adopt resolution number 2025-0380 of the mayor and city council of the city of San Bernardino, California, to deny the appeal of Appeal 25-07, to uphold the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit 23-01, and public convenience or necessity 23-01, and thereby not allowing the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off-sale beer and wine license within the existing approximately 1,434-square-foot Arco gas station and convenience store located at 189 West Highland Avenue, APN 0146-013-25, within the commercial general CG-1 zone. Item number four, Appeal 250-07 for conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01, Ward 2, is a quasi-traditional hearing, and we will follow the procedural rules in accordance with resolution number 2018-88. I'm opening the hearing at 5:25. Any members of the public wishing to address this body or testify on this item, please stand and raise your hand to have the city clerk administer the oath.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give, to give before this body, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do. Thank you.
Thank you. If any council members have had any ex parte communications outside of this public hearing with city staff, the appellant or members of the public related to this item, or if any member needs to recuse themselves, please disclose that at this time and state the substance of the information received. Councilmember, Mayor Potem?
Thank you. I was contacted by one of the representatives of the appellant regarding this matter. No information was exchanged, other than me just letting them know that I would not be meeting with them or having additional conversations due to the fact that this was going to be coming before us, so I'm ready to move forward with making a decision based on the information that's provided here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Any other, Councilwoman Ibarra?
I've had communication with some business owners in that area, specifically the Green Shack, who also has, across the street, another store that sells liquor and how it's affecting their neighborhood.
If I may, mayor, if I may, Councilmember Ibarra, are you prepared to make a decision tonight with an open mind, based only on the information in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Could city staff provide a presentation on this item? Staff will have 15 minutes to speak.
Madam mayor, members of the city council, Assistant Planner Angeline Mendoza will do the PowerPoint presentation. If there are any questions relative to the project, I will be here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Good evening, mayors, city council members, and members of the public. My name is Angeline Mendoza, and I will be presenting Appeal 25-07 for conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01. The applicant is requesting that we uphold Appeal 25-07 to overturn the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01, and thereby not allowing the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off-sale beer and wine license within the existing approximately 1,434-square-foot Arco gas station and convenience store located at 189 West Highland Avenue, within the commercial general CG-1 zone. Or, adopt resolution number 2025-08-381 of the mayor and city council of the city of San Bernardino, California, approving Appeal 25-07, thereby overturning the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01, to allow the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off-sale beer and wine license within an existing approximately 1,434-square-foot Arco gas station and convenience store. This item was properly noticed in advance of the hearing, and up to the point of discussion, staff had not received any public comment. The applicant is here with the presentation to follow, whenever you guys are ready.
Thank you. Any comments by the council? Mayor Potem?
Thank you. Just a clarification on one of the findings that you made, that over the last 12 months, there were 140 crimes reported, and that was then further divided into two types, Part 1 and Part 2. Could you please explain a little bit more of what a Part 1 crime is and what a Part 2 crime is, and of those, how many were correlated to or connected to alcohol?
Mayor Potem Figueroa, I'm a member of the city council. So, a Type 1 crime are the very serious crimes, like murder, forcible rape, et cetera, et cetera. At a Time 2 crimes are things like carjacking and less punitive types of crimes. This evening, I'm hoping that you may have already received this document here that kind of breaks down where these crimes occurred and what each of them meant, and to be able to make a determination as to whether or not they were specifically related to the business itself. It is, it is very possible, in some instances, that a business is located in an area that just has a high rate of crime. But then, the city council has to ask itself two questions. One, if we know the crime rate is higher at this, in this general area, do we want to encourage additional alcohol beverage licenses? Or, two, are we more concerned about whether or not these crimes are specific to the location? For example, an armed robbery, if it happened at this store, it would be documented with the store's address, and any other crimes that are serious crimes would be documented with the store's address. If there are just crimes that happen in the periphery of the business itself, and it was just a 911 call to the police, if the police report to the location itself, they would document the address. Just to let you know, across the street, it's a, it's a very popular hangout for, for the unhoused population. So, some of that might have a contributory effect on, on what is really happening at this particular store, but hopefully, this analysis that you have provides you with the breakdown that you need.
Furthermore, two of the Part 2 crimes, as part of the PD analysis, were alcohol-related crimes at the proposed location, and lastly, nine arrests were made at this particular location itself.
Okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Thank you. Any other, Councilwoman Ortiz?
Was, I know we got this, was this provided to the public as well?
Councilmember Ortiz, I think we made additional, we made enough copies, we provided them to the city clerk, and there are copies in the back.
Okay, because just in case, I want to make sure that we, we mentioned a couple, but, oh, this is just within like a month timeframe from October 1st, I'm sorry, two years, two-year timeframe. Indecent exposure, malicious mischief, check occupied vehicle, strong-on armory, land trespass, indecent exposure, suspicious circumstance, battery, petty theft, man with a gun, weapon disturbance, another armed robbery, like you said, utility theft report, suspicious subject, throwing objects at vehicles, a found adult, a follow-up call, check the area, I just want to make sure the public knows what we're looking at, a welfare check, another weapons disturbance, a man with a gun, a battery, transient, 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 drunken public, shooting, land trespass, 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 battery. So, problematic, to say the least? Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ibarra?
Yes, and just so the public knows, point of clarification, when a business is issued a liquor license or a beer license, do new business owners get that grandfathered onto their property, or do the city pull the, the license associated to that address?
So, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control is very involved in the process, as well as, and so there are a lot of backstops to make sure that if there is a change in operator, they have, the Department of ABC has what's called a person-to-person transfer, so if the operator or property owner for this particular property, if they were granted the type 20 license were to change, then they would need to file that application, and then the Department of ABC would do all their background checks and go through the process.
And if it goes through their process, it won't come before the council or planning commission, right, for a new license?
That typically does not. However, city staff is notified by way of ABC notifications that is sent out from the Riverside District Office, and that's when we can confirm if they need some type of entitlement, or if everything checks out.
Okay, and that is my concern. I know there's a lot of liquor stores throughout the whole city, there's a saturation of liquor licenses out there. One specific corner, and it's very troubling to me when I found out that those businesses all get their licenses grandfathered, is if you go down Arrowhead and 13th Street, for example, right across Elementary School, there's, less than a mile away, there's three different liquor stores, and that is what children are seeing. I don't want this to happen in this neighborhood. As is, I know those local businesses are struggling because of the transient unhoused that are going there, and some of these businesses are having vandalism going on in their properties also, so it's not something that I want to track into our city. And I do thank our planning commission for, for, you know, doing what they did, their due diligence, and for the applicant, I'm sorry, but it's just three businesses back-to-back with liquor licenses, it's not something that we want to see in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other further comments? Mayor Potem?
And I'm not sure if this is in a, I guess this would be more of a legal question, just for clarification purposes. As a reminder, this board is serving as a quasi-judicial board, and not that as a legislative or council, right? So, our role here today is not necessarily to, to judge the merits of the, of the project or the applicant, or application, so to speak, as much as it is for us to determine whether the planning commission's decision, based on the facts of finding, are founded or unfounded, and it therefore would be the appellant's duty or obligation to provide evidence to, to that effect?
This is a de novo hearing, and so you're going to hear all the evidence from the, you know, like, just like the planning commission did at the first time, as a first time. You can make up your own mind to overturn planning commission decision, or to uphold it, but it's a de novo hearing. It's not, did the planning commission act reasonably? It's a de novo hearing. You get to decide, regardless of what they did. So, really, what it comes down to is, do they meet the findings? This is, there are some instances where, not at a gas station, someone is applying for a liquor license, and the code is very black and white. If you're within so many feet of a church or a school, the code does not allow approval of alcohol at that location. This is not one of those instances. It allows discretion, but there's certain findings that have to be made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Good comments. Any other comments? If not, we will, at this time, I will invite the appellant to provide their evidence or testimony on the item. You will have 15 minutes to speak. Councilmembers, please hold on any question until the testimony has concluded.
My name is Kevin Vivian. I'm the owner of the Arco gas station located at 189 West Highland Avenue. Our corporate name is 189 West LLC. We've owned this location for about five years now. This request is for a type 20 alcohol license, not a type 21, which would be full liquor that you see at your liquor stores. A little bit about me and my partner, Nathan Tubian, we're second-generation gas station
And we're willing to work with council and staff with other various mitigations, such as having locked doors and things like that. One thing about being a major franchise throughout Southern California is we're held by franchise rules, we're not your typical mom-and-pop operator. Arco holds us to very strict standards, our point-of-sale system is monitored, and if any alcohol sale is conducted, the clerk has to swipe an ID, so we're not just selling to any random person walking through our door. I'm proud to say, throughout our 20 gas stations that we currently have beer and wine, we've had zero violations with the ABC. There are a few reasons that this license would help achieve community and economic benefits. It supports the revitalization of the existing commercial corridors along Highland Avenue, and at the same time helps our business grow, helps us hire more local staff. By having our gross revenue go up, we'll be able to staff more people at our facility. As I mentioned earlier, working with local law enforcement, local fire, is something that is very important, especially being in a very environmentally-driven business. Arco is a brand that has been around since 1980. One of the things that we looked into after our planning commission hearing, and, you know, this is something we found, we were talking about crime a few minutes ago, is, you know, we love working with law enforcement, so we'll call, you know, law enforcement for whatever it might be, but in looking into the crime statistics from our findings, we found out that there was only one alcohol-related crime within those statistics. Now, the state of California recommends a certain amount of licenses per census. In this particular census, they recommend having five. There's currently seven, which is technically a minor overage. The state does not have an issue with a conditional use permit, as long as we have your blessing. Upon further investigation on our end, in Census Track 49, the state allocates six licenses, there's currently 10. In Census Track 41, the state allows 12, there's currently 17. In Census Track 56, the state allows six, there's currently 14. These censuses are located on major corridors throughout the city of San Bernardino, such as Hospitality Lane, North San Bernardino, West Second Street, Central San Bernardino, and North San Bernardino. Our business is very big on safety and security, which is why we have enhanced our lighting, surveillance, and continue to train our staff through the state program called LEAD, Lead, which is a program offered by the ABC for our staff to know what to look for if underage or a person who's drunk or whatsoever you have comes into our store. Our sales are only limited to off-sale only, which means no alcohol will be consumed on our site. We're constantly also inspected by the ABC to make sure we are following all protocols. After our planning commission hearing, we had the opportunity to work with San Bernardino Police Department. We've went ahead and had them tap into our surveillance system, so they currently have access, which, you know, we love. We've also been a huge part to the city of San Bernardino, we've been part of the tour of toys that we contributed to. We've been there for five years, we don't plan on going anywhere. And just recently, about a few months ago, we took advantage of the city's facade grant to help improve the property. Some information about the surrounding properties, to the north, there's a market, to the west, there's a 7-Eleven, to the south, we have a residential housing, and to the east, there's a vacant lot. We've looked into San Bernardino's general plan and discovered that this is consistent and supports the revitalization of underutilized commercial sites, aligns with police departments' review standards, promotes adaptive reuse and corridor development, and fulfills the city's goals for business retention and revitalization. As discussed, we're offering many mitigations. One issue that Sandra had brought up regarding if it's grandfathered in or not, one mitigation factor that many other cities put into place is that we can come in front of council every year, every two years, whatever, if we're a bad operator, and that privilege can be taken away. Mitigations that we're offering currently is, like I stated, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., not to 2:00 a.m. Our staff being required to go through the state-led training, continuing to have state-of-the-art security cameras, absolutely zero alcohol advertising outside of our building, and to continue what we've done for the past five years, which is to maintain a safe and clean environment for our customers and our clientele. We understand there's other businesses selling alcohol, and as a business owner and part of the community, we're always engaged with our customers and our clientele, which is why we're considered a convenience store, and we want to serve our customers and clientele to give them the convenience of having a one-stop shop for all, and avoiding having them go to the supermarket, or whatever it might be, and have them make the purchase at our establishment. We've also looked into the environmental and policies, and to our findings, it's Metzika, and it's not going to cause any construction or anything like that. We feel compelled, we feel compelled for the approval based that it's conditionally permitted in this zone, we have adequate public services, there's, on our belief, no negative impact to public welfare. Once again, we have a fully mitigational plan in place, and if there's any other mitigation, we're open to it. And once again, we're a part of the city's growth. So, my request is to be blessed tonight to adopt a resolution approving CUP 23-01 and PCN 23-01 for a type 20 beer and wine license here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have questions for the appellate?
When you say addressing crime and oversaturation concerns, at the bottom, you say, "the state allocates five licenses and seven exist," minor overage, is that your terminology or the state's terminology of description?
My terminology of minor overage, yeah. Because as I discussed earlier, in other censuses throughout the city, such as Census 41, or sorry, 56, the state allocates six, and there's 14. So, in my opinion, that's a major overage, we're just over by two licenses here.
No, I get, I understand that, because what I've noticed in our city is a lot of minor things lead up to a lot of major problems. And this is why we continue to go over our allotted amounts. I get what you're saying about wanting your business to be a one-stop shop, but I have a hard time, probably the hardest time, associating beer and wine in an Arco with the revitalization of a very important corridor in our city. One that is having a very hard time with crime. And oddly enough, I think, maybe, and I could be miscorrelating this, but maybe you haven't seen that problem, because you actually don't sell any alcohol. And so, we have saved you from the problems that exist by not doing this. I'm just going to, so, you're welcome, just in case that did happen. If it hasn't, the liquor stores are having problems, everywhere up and down the street are having issues. But I think when we keep thinking that overextending ourselves are minor inconveniences, that's not to the, it's to the state standard, but to the community as a whole. I mean, Councilwoman Ibarra is, Ibarra, excuse me, is correct, in that this oversaturation is in very specific areas. And it may be in the second ward, but right across the street is my ward. And my constituents are as equally concerned about why we are always looking to expand alcohol, tobacco, and liquor, instead of, you know, education, and parks, and all the things that they really want. Because that's not really the good time, I think, that our residents are looking for. So, I just hope, in the future, that when we look at the terminology that fits the situation, what you may consider being minor doesn't feel that minor to our residents. And so, that for me is a no. It really, that, I appreciate your business in this city, but I think the overall impact really does matter, it really does have a bigger impact to us than you think. And there's a reason why San Bernardino is the way it is, why it looks the way it looks, because too many things are minor over time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Potem?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for being here and presenting and giving your testimony, and thank you for, you know, wanting to be a part of our city and doing things the right way, and some of the things that you've provided back to the community. But part of having a conditional use permit, you have to meet certain criteria, certain findings of fact, and in this case, there were about five or six findings of fact, seven, it looks like, that were not met. And so, I want to afford you an opportunity to provide any evidence or any testimony to counter some of those things, or to convince us why some of these findings of fact are not appropriate. And I'll focus in on three of them, because some of them are kind of related to each other in some way or manner. But the first finding of fact relates to that of the commercial zones and the specific standards within them. Within the Development Code, it prohibits new alcoholic beverage licenses within 500 feet of a place of worship or religious institution. This proposed location falls, there are two, if I remember correctly, there were two places of worship that were found within 500 feet. One is 124, and the other one was 334 feet. Do you have any evidence that states that this location does not fall within 500 feet of places of worship? Or do you know of any? Well, please, I mean, go ahead, I'll let you answer that, please.
So, like I said, we've been there for five years at this particular location right now. About two years, two and a half years ago, before we decided to apply and have a privilege to sell, we did reach out to the places of worship. We've talked to them within the past six, seven months. I'm sure, I think earlier Angie said there was no letter, you know, or whatever, received, recommending a denial, so we did speak to that. That was our initial concern two and a half years ago, so I hope that answers your question.
I'll go to the second finding of fact, which deals with the public convenience or necessity, and you mentioned this earlier in your testimony as well, identifying other tracks with an over-allowance of licenses. In this one specifically, it's allowed for a maximum of up to five licenses, there are currently seven, this would be the eighth. I understand your position, presenting an argument, which I find to be based on a fallacy, that just because it's been done in the past somewhere else, that this should be allowed as well. But I want to afford you another opportunity as to why this finding of fact is untrue. There are currently allowed five off-sale licenses, this would be the eighth. Is that finding of fact untrue? Or do you have any evidence to identify that that information is not factual?
That there are seven existing licenses?
Do you disagree that there are five, or there are more than five?
No, no, I acknowledge.
Do you disagree that the allowance, the allowed number is five? Do you disagree that there are currently more than five, or that the code or the ABC does not allow for that track more than five? Is there a disagreement with that?
It's not that there's a disagreement, the reason for our investigation is that these allocations that were allocated by the Alcoholics Beverage Control, these were put into place over 30 years, 40 years ago. You know, they weren't taking into account for what the world and business has went into today. So, our findings is that there's seven, and that every, you know, it's a privilege, and every other overage, I'm sure was a privilege too, that was granted.
Thank you. And you know what, and I tend to legislative, I tend to agree with you, I don't think the government should be in the business of deciding, you know, who winners and losers are when it comes to business, I think, but that's not our role here, we have to make a decision based on what's on the books, I guess, so to speak, right now. And so, in a different world, in a different board, I'd probably, you know, I want to be business-friendly, and I want to be able to say, hey, look, you as a business owner, you do, you go do what you feel is going to be successful for you, without government interfering with whatever you're doing. But based on what we're dealing with here, and what's written on the books, we have a certain standard that we have to follow as well. And so, again, I don't want to continue beating this up, but I'll go to the last finding of fact, although there's other ones, but I'll go over to the, how this will not detrimentally affect nearby neighborhoods, considering the distance of residential buildings, schools, parks, playgrounds, or other recreational uses, you know, places of worship. Currently, there's, again, going back to the places of worship, again, one is 124 feet, one is 334 feet. The, and in the previous one, as far as the census, or the track there, as far as locations, I mean, there's one, as far as for convenience, it's about 55 feet from that location, 55 feet. I mean, it's going to take you longer to walk from where you are to the door in the back, that's probably twice the amount there. So, again, how would this not be detrimental to the nearby neighborhood, considering that there are places of worship, or schools, or buildings, anything else like that, that wouldn't sustain finding the, finding number four?
And like I stated earlier, we've partnered with, you know, local PD, so we're not here to make the community worse, we're here to make it better, with all due respect. So, again, we know it's a privilege, which is why we're in front of you guys, if not, I wouldn't be here. So, and having, having competition is a good thing, I'm sure we can all agree to that. So, having a business 55 feet away, he's selling liquor, we're requesting beer and wine, so it's two complete different things. Our customers are fueling, his customers are walking to buy, you know, liquor, so...
But there is another license in that area, which is within, which is 82 feet away, which would be a similar license. So, you do have two locations, one at 55 feet, one at 82 feet, approximately, with, one with a similar license type, and one with type 21. And so, I'm trying to see how that, you know, the convenience factor plays a role there. When 55 feet or 82 feet, I can, I mean, that's, you can walk that without breaking a sweat, usually, so. I mean, there are supermarkets where one aisle is probably 55 feet.
I mean, for us, again, we're a convenience store, so the business you're talking about is a 7-Eleven. If a customer does want to purchase, they have to physically cross the street at the crosswalk, which we've seen many accidents there, and people trying to like, run over people. So, once again, it's, this is, this is a public convenience necessity, which means... which means we're here to serve the public. And we're already serving the public by selling them fuel, and it's just a matter of adding that extra commodity for them to buy.
Thank you. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Any further questions from council or comments? Seeing none, thank you, council, for your statements and comments. At this time, I invite members of the public, who have been sworn by Madam City Clerk, to provide evidence or testimony on this item. You will have three minutes to address the council. Madam City Clerk, please call them up.
Alexander Schmutzer, Christian Shaughnessy, Charlene Gross, Darlene Gross, Isaiah Martinez, Les, Luis Ojeda, Andrew Vasquez, and Victor Gonzalez.
Thank you. You could turn on the mic and please state your name, for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alexander Schmutzer, and I'm here representing the Green Shack Marketplace on 163 West Highland Avenue. Our family has proudly served this community for almost 50 years. We're a locally-owned business and not a chain. We've stayed here through the good times and the bad, and we believe in the city. Tonight, I'm asking you to deny Arco's appeal for a liquor license. The Planning Commission has already denied it, and that decision was absolutely the right one. Within just a few hundred feet of Arco, there are already multiple alcohol outlets. Green Shack Marketplace, our business, has responsibly held a beer, wine, and liquor license for nearly five decades. 7-Eleven is only two buildings west of us and also sells alcohol. And MTNH, directly across from Arco, recently applied for a liquor license and was denied for the exact same reasons Arco was. What's more ironic is that Arco actually signed the petition opposing MTNH's liquor license, saying the area didn't need another alcohol outlet. That was only months ago, and now they're asking for the very thing they opposed. This part of Highland Avenue has already, already has more than enough liquor sales within a few blocks in each direction. You've got a church just two buildings east of MTNH, and an elementary school less than a quarter mile west. Beyond the paperwork, the reality on the ground is serious. In the past month alone, we've had two major burglaries, one where thieves tore through the roof to steal copper and air conditioning units, and another where they broke in and stole our safe. But the real danger sits between the Green Shack and Arco, a vacant building that's been abandoned for over 20 years. It's full of trash, rodents, and people sleeping inside. It's been the source of fires and constant calls to the city. They clear it, and within a day, it's been reoccupied. That building should have been condemned years ago. It's hurting everyone around it, businesses, residents, and the city's image. We're ready to help fix that. Green Shack would be glad to take the responsibility for the site, to clean it up, and to turn it into a safe and secure parking lot that benefits everyone nearby. The bottom line is this: The corridor doesn't need another liquor license. It needs leadership, enforcement, and cleanup. If the city wants to rebuild and attract good business to Highland Avenue, it starts by removing what's holding it back, not by adding another alcohol outlet to an already struggling area. We love the city, and we've proven that by staying when it hasn't been easy. Please stand by your original decision and deny Arco's appeal, and help us address the real issue, the condemned building that's next door. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Isaiah. I'm a young person who cares about San Bernardino, and I want to see it move forward. I don't think that it makes any sense to deny this local business the ability to serve beer and wine, when they've shown that they're responsible and willing to work with the police department to keep things safe. They hire locally, give back, and are trying to grow the right way. When we say we want progress, we have to support the people who are actually doing it. I hope the council approves this appeal because business like this makes San Bernardino stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, honorable mayor. My name is Christian Shaughnessy. I actually work literally down the street from the business in question. Because of street outreach and the sheer incidence of homelessness and of crime in the area, I am unfortunately very intimately familiar with the intersection in question. That intersection does not need more alcohol. That intersection does not need more mind-altering substances. I encourage the public, if this conversation seems a bit abstract to you, after the council meeting's over, simply drive to the location in question, because even on the way over here, there were a good 15, 20 unhoused people at that intersection. So with that being the case, without getting into the politics of the matter, let's have a bipartisan consensus here. Let's have a multi-factional consensus here amongst the council. Let's collaborate, and let's take a stand against more mind-altering substances that could actually be potentially sold to the unhoused over there. That could get more people killed, get more unhoused killed. That could have local homeowners have their properties broken into because of people on this alcohol. And I want to acknowledge fully, I mean, thank you to the gentlemen for bringing this business to San Bernardino. You do own 25 franchises, though. I think you will make enough money if you do not have an alcohol license at this specific location. With that being the case, thank you all. Let's collaborate further on this, and let's, let's have a much more safe and prosperous San Bernardino for everybody. Thank you. And my young people really appreciate it, too.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Great evening, mayor and council. My name is Andrew Vasquez. I'm a student here in San Bernardino College. I've been following this discussion closely, and I'm concerned about the reasoning behind denying this business the ability to serve beer and wine. Much of this discussion seems to center around crime and public safety, yet there doesn't appear to be any evidence leaking to this particular business, to those issues. In fact, the owners have already taken proactive steps, as we've seen today, by committing toward working directly with the police department and enrolling in the city's camera integration system, measures that demonstrate responsibility, as well as cooperation with the city. As a resident who truly wants to see San Bernardino grow, I believe it's important that we remain fair and consistent if we want to attract responsible business owners. We should support those who are actively contributing to the community's safety and success. I urge the council to support this appeal and send a clear message that San Bernardino values and welcomes responsible local business owners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Victor, and I'm 18, and lived here my whole life in San Bernardino. I saw this item on the agenda, and I decided to look into it. I even watched the Planning Commission meeting and read some of the letters that were sent in. My friends and I talk about which places actually follow the rules. And everyone knows not to go to businesses like Arco if you're under age, because they check IDs and don't take chances. They've built that reputation for doing things the right way. Honestly, places like Arco feel safer to visit than random liquor stores. They're clean, and the employees take their job seriously. That's the kind of businesses we should be supporting in our city. If we went, if we want San Bernardino to move forward, we should back the businesses that follow the law, create jobs, and keep our community safe. I hope the council overturns the Planning Commission's decision and approves the disappeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name. You can turn on your mic. Thank you.
My name is Charlene Gross, and I am a resident of San Bernardino County, but most importantly of Rialto. I know that San Bernardino does have some issues there, but what we're, I've been hearing tonight, it's not about, it's more, I'm hearing about homelessness and crime, which isn't directly tied to the business itself. And I care deeply about small businesses. So I'm concerned that denying the business owner the ability to serve beer and wine, we're not talking about hard alcohol or anything here, sends the wrong message, not just to them, but to every local entrepreneur who's trying to invest in the city. We talk about wanting new businesses, local jobs, but when someone follows the rules and goes through the proper channels and still gets turned down, it discourages other business owners and entrepreneurs from trying to invest in the city. So this isn't a fly-by-night operation. It's a locally-owned franchise that's been run responsibly by a second-generation family. They hire locally, contribute to our tax base, and have committed to working hand-in-hand with law enforcement to keep things safe. If we want San Bernardino to thrive, we have to stand behind people who are doing the work here, you know, and investing in our city, local businesses. We need to support them, and this is how we strengthen our economy and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Luis Ojeda. Well, I think that we kind of think of this in the wrong way, because what we need to be talking about is the people that already got licenses, right? And as far as I know, everyone that has a license has a condition, condition of approval, which means they have to meet the conditions at all times to keep this approval. You can go to most of the places that sell liquor, beer, wine, and they're a mess. Their landscaping is a mess, their places, they're full of trash. So why we're not doing anything about that? Okay? So now, if we want to send the message that we want to be open for business, I think instead of discouraging a business owner to invest in the city, what we'd like to invite them is how can they collaborate? For example, he's willing to mitigate. One idea for me would be like, all right, so why don't you hire 24/7 security? How about that? So the people in the area will feel more safe having security around at all times in this particular location. Because I'm very familiar with the whole area in San Bernardino. Nameing the place, I'm probably not, okay? And I know how problematic each place is. So if you guys don't grant this license, you think that the problems aren't going to go away? No, they're not going to go away. Why? Because it has nothing to do with this particular business selling or not selling beer. It's a deeper-rooted problem, that is homelessness, addiction. If they don't go there, they're going to go across the street or to the next corner. So for me, I feel that this is very unfair. And hopefully, all of you guys will start looking into all those people that already got licenses, they're not keeping up with their places. Because we need to start there. We want to change San Bernardino? We need to make San Bernardino look beautiful. So we need, we need to start with those business owners, they already have licenses, let's check how their business look. We need to start there. And that way, we send, you know, the right message, we're open for business, if you're willing to work with us to mitigate the concerns of the public. Because for me, having a place where we have 24/7 security, I want to stop there. I want to go around there. And I'm going to tell you something, I bet it would discourage all the legalities that go around there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Melina, better known as Melly. I am a youth advisory board member. On my way over here, I passed by the location, and I saw so many people laying down on the streets, some of them holding bottles. It's not even, it just turned six. My concern is the accessibility. I'm not saying, don't give the license. That's for you to decide, of course. But I have my reservations on the license. I'm 21, right? I'm as old as some of these gentlemen that just presented, maybe older, maybe younger. And I'm having my fun, you know, I'm 21, but I'm being responsible about it. And sometimes adults that are older than me, in my own life, haven't been responsible about it. So I can see where the concern is coming from, where there are residents saying, let's not give this liquor license to this company, or to this business. But overall, my stance is no. And that's coming from someone who is 21, who does like the accessibility of alcohol to them. I'm saying no, because it's not fair to the people that are in this area, in this neighborhood, in these schools. Do you know how easy it is for a high schooler to get a fake ID? It's so easy. In my high school days, I didn't have one, but many of my friends did. And how easy it is to get somebody's social security number, and somebody will sell you their social security number, and you will go and get a fake ID. That's a real ID, just social security number, proof of address. They'll sell it to you, and you can get a real ID. It's so simple. So what we're saying, hey, we're going to put in these regulations so that you have to swipe an ID. That ID could be real, but it's a minor behind that picture. Think about the families that you are affecting. And I commend you, as a business owner, saying, hey, I'm going to do the right steps, but the right steps sometimes aren't going to be the best steps. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Les. The first thing, Sandra, you should have been questioning the owner. This is your ward. You didn't ask him any questions. Second, if you really want to help the community, we have the building downtown San Bernardino where the, I guess Cal State is over it. You should go down there and show people how to open up a gas station. You got 25 of them. Or you can add some groceries within your liquor store, I mean, within your gas station. But bringing a liquor store within San Bernardino, that's the last thing we need. I grew up in a halfway house. My grandma owned a halfway house downtown San Bernardino. And then come to, and then to hear that it was another halfway house across the street from this Arco, that's the last thing that needs to happen. And then you guys are talking about statistics. Are they saying, they didn't say if the person was drunk, why are they doing the crime? They didn't break it down like that, because some people do get drunk before they do crime, commit crime, or get high before they commit crime. So you guys didn't break down the statistics like that. And then the questions that you asked, Juan, man, you should have kept that to yourself. You wasted a lot of time doing that. And then what else? Oh, and crime is crime, period. So we don't want crime, period. So it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what type of crime it is. And like I said, alcohol helps. A lot of criminals do, you know, it gives them that boost to do the crime. You know, some people don't understand that. Oh, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, I invite the appellant to provide any rebuttal evidence and testimony. You will have five minutes to address the council.
Thank you again, everybody, for your time and whoever spoke. I hear you, we hear you. Unfortunately, I'm just the owner of this particular gas station and this property, so I can answer anything that happens at this particular location, this property. What I have seen the past five years is that the city is going in the right direction, and that things have cleaned up in that particular area. One of the comments was getting a fake social security or whatever. I mean, like I stated earlier, it's not the matter of swiping ID at a register. That's why the clerks go through lead training, which they're trained to know what to look for. Again, we understand it's a privilege. As I brought up to Sandra earlier, we're open to coming in front of you guys on a yearly basis, bi-yearly basis, whatever you guys recommend. And that privilege can be taken away. We just want to be granted the opportunity to give it a shot, and, you know, show you guys what we've done at our other locations with not having any issues. So, again, thank you for your time. It's been a long road. It's been two years. We've worked very close with staff, so we hope that you guys can give us the blessing to continue to grow at this location. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last, one last, to answer Mr. Juan's concerns. So the five licenses, it's a recommendation by the state. I'm just putting that out there. It's not a mandate saying, oh, it has to be five licenses. It's just a, each amount for each census is a recommended amount, not a mandated amount. Just also, thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any final questions? I do see Councilman Ortiz, followed by Councilman Canas, followed by Councilmember Ibarra.
Then I don't know if we can verify this, but I heard someone say that the appellant
Then I don't know if we can verify this, but I heard someone say that the appellant signed a survey or a, a petition to deny a license to another owner. Can we verify that? Because...
So Dr. Ortiz, um, one of, the case planner for MTNH Meat Market that was denied is still on staff with us, so we wouldn't be able to verify immediately, but definitely, that's something we can look into.
Yeah, because I think if you're not down for someone else to have the same thing you're asking for, it's kind of hypocritical. I mean, if that's really what happened. If not, then at least we can clear the air on that. But, um, just upping the odds and the numbers to Louis's point, it really doesn't cure the problem. Although that wasn't 100% his point, it was hold people accountable. And until we are willing to hold ourselves to a limit, who are we holding accountable? Because accountability starts here, and the accountability starts to the community. And what I think Councilman, or Mayor Potem Figueroa did well is we always look for that legal alternative, right? Can you, can you go against what the stipulations are? And what the, what staff has done, and I am not always in favor of what staff does, so this is pretty, pretty good. Because I think the, the level of, of how you have matched the, the community issues, the current statistic of crime, the fact that you can go to a 7-Eleven across the street, a liquor store across the street, the food, the, the Green Shack two doors down, it's, it's how I feel about car washes. Like, how many do you, how many do you need on a corner? So, and then this is go get gas and go get out, go get beer and wine and take off in a car. Or, you know, I don't know how y'all do it back in the day, but people don't always leave after they buy and sit in their cars and drink. We know that going up and down. I mean, I live on Mountain View. I come down that street. That, that is a high density issue of bike riders, of homelessness. So yeah, we need to cure the problem. We do. But then why exacerbate it? Like I said, they keep saying, the crime is not happening at this place. This is the one place that doesn't sell beer and wine. Is that not the reason why they're not having this problem? And do we compound the problem? We have to give you 24-hour security just not to have this problem? That even makes sense. So I, I appreciate all those, but yeah, if we could just even, if, I mean, we're still going to vote on it tonight, but I'd just like to know if that petition thing was a thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Canas?
My questions were actually the same as Councilmember Ortiz. I did pick up on the public commenter and their, their reference to you denying a permit for a local business. So I did want to question that, if you want to speak to that, if you, if that is in fact accurate, and if you can give us an explanation as to your reason why.
We've never signed any sort of denial for anybody in the local area. That can be confirmed by Angie and her staff. So wherever that information came from, it is not true. If anything, we, uh, support our local neighbors and businesses. We have a vacant lot next door to us that was doing a legal chicken farm. We worked closely with local PD to clean that up. So completely the opposite, we support our local neighbors and businesses.
Thank you. Councilmember Ibarra?
I was going to ask the question, but he responded already. Because I wanted to see what your reasoning would have been, but since you're denying it, I can't ask you that question anymore. I do want to thank you for the work that you're doing as a local business owner. A lot of our business owners collaborate with our PD because they care about their business doing good, they care about the neigh, the neighborhoods they serve. So I commend you on that, thank you a mu, a lot. And although you, you downplay beer and wine, it's alcohol. And, and Christian Schahanis, he said it perfectly, it's a mind altering substance. It's off sales, you're going to sell it to people and they're going to go somewhere else and drink it. Just because they don't drink it in front of your facility doesn't mean that your facility is not encouraging the drinking, the problems that we're having in our city. My concern is the saturation of the, of the licenses in that neighborhood. We already mentioned, there's churches nearby, there's schools nearby, residential right behind your property. You know, there's women that are being housed in that area too, that are trying to bring their families back together. And, you know, we already have 7-Eleven and we have Green Shack. Um, I, I'm not, you mentioned MNT is still going through their process too. Angeline?
Sorry, uh, MTNH was denied.
They were denied, right? And there was, I believe on that one, there was also community feedback that they didn't want it there either. And for the same reasons that yours was denied is a reason theirs was denied. I hope you understand that. It's not, it's not going against your business. Arco is a gas station, you have everything you would need when you're traveling, all, all the, you know, I, I go to Arco's pump gas, I buy whatever toiletries that I need if I'm traveling. So that, that helps. But I don't think selling alcohol is going to, I don't know what the difference is and how much it's going to help your sales, besides what you're already doing. It's just one more item you're adding, adding in. And I don't think it was worth going through this problem when you already know your neighbors are selling alcohol. Whether it's beer, wine, liquor, it doesn't matter. It's alcohol. And, and somebody's going to buy it. And, and just a little retrospect, in 2020, when we had riots on Waterman and Baseline, I was outside of Miyagi sushi, and a lot of people broke into those gas stations. And what were they taking? Alcohol. Whatever they found, they stole that. I don't think you want to track that to your business. Just, just want to give you some proper, you know, suggestions, maybe something else that can help your business, but not the alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember Ortiz?
I'd like to move to approve staff's recommendation to deny the appeal.
I'll second. There's a motion, second. Any further comments? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk? Actually, I need to close the public hearing. I am now closing the public hearing at 6:33. And there has been a motion by Councilmember Ortiz and seconded by Councilmember Ibarra. Madam City Clerk? Please vote digitally. Oh, it's not allowing them to vote digitally.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Just one verification, this is to uphold the, no, sorry. This is to uphold the, uh, the Planning Commission's ruling.
This is, this is approving, um, the denial of the appeal.
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously to adopt Resolution 2025-380, denying the appeal.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the...
Yes.
Denying the appeal 25-07, thereby upholding the Planning Commission denial of the conditional use permit 23-01 and public convenience or necessity 23-01, and not allowing the request for an alcoholic beverage control type 20 off sale beer and wine licensed within an existing approximately 14, 1,434 square feet Arco Gas Station and Convenience Store located at 189 West Highland Avenue, APN 0146-0-013-25, within the commercial general CG1 zone. The motion was made by Councilmember Ortiz and seconded by Councilmember Ibarra, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to, uh, public hearing item number five. Public hearing on annexation number 51 to Community Facilities District 2019-1, Maintenance Services, Cajon Industrial Park, Ward 6. The public hearing to consider annexation proceedings and elections for City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District number 2019-1, Maintenance Services, Annexation number 51 is now open at 6:35. Before we proceed, we have a comment from staff. Is there a comment from staff?
There's no comment from staff, ma'am.
I take that back. I was reading the wrong one. So, um, do any members of the, uh, council wish to hear the staff report? Councilmember Ortiz, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question of staff. Was this then duly noticed?
Yes, um, Councilmember Ortiz, I can answer that. It was duly noticed, there was some delays in the mail getting to, um, the one property owner. However, it did get to the property owner, and as I understand from the City Clerk, we just received the, uh, what signature from the property owner today.
That's correct.
And there was only one, one property owner.
So is that adequate time, then?
Yes.
Yes, the, the delay was not staff's fault, it was actually the post office. Staff was tracking it and it stayed, I think, in Chicago for about two weeks before it actually got to the owner. I have no idea why, but staff did what they were supposed to.
And, and the signature did come back.
Okay.
Then I, can I waive the reading? Can I?
The staff, uh, report? Okay.
Can I waive the, I'd like to make a motion to waive the, whatever, the staff report, I'm sorry. Yes.
Is there a second? There's a motion for that?
Second.
Second? Council consensus on that? Not seeing any opposition? So, okay, we will now receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the City Council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slip to the city clerk. Has the city clerk received written protests?
We've received zero written, zero written protests, and there are no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Um, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number 51 of Community Facilities District number 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register of Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number 51 of Community Facilities District number 2019-1.
Thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed, the time being 6:38. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-382 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, calling an election to submit to the qualified electors the question of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District number 2019-1, Maintenance Services, Annexation number 51. There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? Motion by Councilmember Sharet, seconded by Councilmember Ortiz. Madam City Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The official ballot, ballot has been opened and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot, and the election is now closed.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-383 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, declaring election results for Community Facilities District number 2019-1, Maintenance Services, Annexation number 51. Is there a motion?
Flores moves.
There's a motion, there's a second by Councilmember Sharet. Motion by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Sharet. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Do we need to note that Councilmember Ortiz is absent? She's not at the dial?
Yeah, she's not, you're right. I just didn't take her.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title only ordinance number MC1655.
Move.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilmember Flores, seconded by Councilmember Sharet. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance into the record.
Ordinance number 1655 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending ordinance number MC1522 and levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2025, 2026 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing landscaping, lighting, streets drain, streets drainage, and reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District number 2019-1 Maintenance Services.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearings. Thank you, counsel. We will now move on to City Manager update. Mr. City Manager, please proceed with your report.
Um, Madam Mayor and City Council Members, thank you for the opportunity to present. The city partnered with, with SCAG to evaluate recent improvements to 49 intersections along three high traffic corridors, Highland Avenue, Baseline Street, and Mount Vernon Avenue. Preliminary results found that accidents resulting in serious injury or death decreased by 82% and the total number of crashes decreased by 50%. The improvement is due to a dilemma zone, um, sensors which automatically delay green light cycles if vehicles enter an intersection during the critical period between a yellow and red light. Yesterday, the city, um, National Corps, the County of San Bernardino, along with state and federal partners, broke ground on phase four of the Arrowhead Grove Housing Development at the former Waterman Garden site on Baseline Street. The city contributed approximately $5 million in home funds to support this project. When this phase is completed in 2027, the additional 92 units will bring the Arrowhead Grove complex will, to, to a total of 414 affordable units. We are pleased to report that the renovation has been completed at Nicholson Park in the city's west side. Hydroseeding and additional landscape work is currently being done. There's a 90-day window for the landscaping to take hold, so we expect to hold a community grand reopening celebration in early February. Last week, San Bernardino Unified School District opened two new facilities representing a significant investment in both the city and its students. The Pocum Pocum Welcome Center on East Street provides centralized enrollment, testing, and health services, uh, for the, for the school district students, and Francis Grace Cardinal Child Development Center on the campus of San Bernardino High School provides innovative, social, and literacy learning for young children ranging from newborn to five years old. Last night, the city was named by the Salvation Army as its 2025 Community Partner of the Year. The Salvation Army works closely with the city to provide essential homeless outreach services, case management, rapid rehousing, emergency shelter, and prevention services, as well as a part of the peace, uh, San Bernardino's PD's peace team. The partnership has resulted in finding permanent housing for 54 formerly homeless families, 82 individuals in the city of San Bernardino. And finally, uh, the community is encouraged to honor its veterans with a Veterans Day Ceremony and Resource Fair on Saturday, November 8th, at the Court Street Square, located 349 Northeast Street. The ceremony, which will start at 10:00 AM, will include a presentation of colors, recognition of several outstanding hometown heroes, and the awarding of a challenge coins to all veterans in attendance. There will also be a resource fair from 11:00 to 4:00, featuring organizations specializing in serving veterans. That is, that is in conclusion.
The screen went dark, so I figured that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving on to public comments. At this time, public comments will be heard for items on the open session and items not on the agenda. To address the City Council, everyone must complete a speaker card and provide it to the city clerk. Only those speaker cards turned into the city clerk will be allowed to address the City Council. No late cards will be accepted. Each person should state their name for the record before beginning their comments. As your name is called, please do line up in the, uh, line up behind the podium. Um, we have two podiums available for your convenience. Please proceed to either one as soon as your name is called. Please note, your name will only be called once. If you do not respond when called, you may be, may forfeit your opportunity to speak. If you require Spanish interpretation, we do have an interpreter on site. Please raise your hand at this time to indicate you would need interpreting assistance. In addition, we have interpreting listening devices available in the back. We ask that you please observe proper decorum and do not speak out of turn or make comments from your seat. If you wish to address the Mayor and City Council, please be sure to submit a speaker slip. If you speak out of turn or disrupt the meeting, a warning may be given and/or you will be asked to leave the meeting pursuant to Government Code, uh, Section 54957.9 and Penal Code 403. Thank you. Gracias. We have 26 speakers tonight. Each speaker will have three minutes. Madam City Clerk, please call the speakers.
Al Palazzo, Mike Hartley, Christian Shaughnessy, Kim Calvin, Luis Ojeda, Georgia L., Joe Solis, Jim Smith, John Schollenberger, Dolores Armstead, Nancy Acevedo.
Mayor, council members, and city manager. I would like a seat at the table on staff to revitalize Mount Vernon economically with more businesses and jobs for the residents of San Bernardino. With my education and training and professional experience, my life experience and my vision for this city and Mount Vernon, I should have a seat at the table. Look at Rancho Cucamonga, Foothill Boulevard, Route 66. They stole our history. They have all kinds of monuments, tributes, sculptures, telling the history of Route 66. Buildings with characteristics of beautiful Mediterranean architecture with arches, arcades, covered arch walkways, pasels, Roman, Greek, and Renaissance columns, public spaces, plazas, squares with many fountains, landscaping, and lighting. Rancho Cucamonga, Route 66, has all types of diverse restaurants, cafes, themed eateries with outdoor dining and beautiful settings. They have made Route 66 a destination. We can do more than Rancho Cucamonga and take Mount Vernon to a higher level without government money. Paris is the number-one destination in the world. If you will give me the opportunity to explain and implement my ideas, given what we have to work with, we could make Mount Vernon a destination to not compete with the downtown but to expand it and complement our inner city and to build on our history, not to live in the past but to move forward so that we can be like other cities in the county. Imagine buildings that have the top of windows with triangles and half moons. You see this in Rome, London, Paris, the U.S. Capitol, the U.S. White House, and posters showing this on the windows at the high couture catering business on South E near FedEx. Add spectacular monuments. Some people on the city council who have taken my tour have heard my ideas. We can do it because I believe in the people in this community. It's not government that's going to do it. It's going to empower and motivate and inspire the people with ideas that can change their lives economically.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mike Hartley. I don't know about you guys, but I'd like to have a beer or a glass of wine. I'd like to give a shout-out to Public Works. I don't know if you're aware, but our wire thieves stole the wire to all the lights on Broadmoor and Parkside Drive 10 days before Halloween. And they got them up and running in eight days. And so, I just want to throw my appreciation out to them. Second, we have thrown millions and millions of dollars to the homeless problem and yet it grows and it gets bigger and nothing gets done. Now, that's not really my question because homeless people are always going to be out there. My problem is code enforcement. Why we only have 16 code enforcement officers as I speak tonight? This is crazy. And I keep on hounding you guys. We need more code enforcement officers. If you want to beautify San Bernardino, if you want people to move here, you got to beautify it. And the only way you can do that is with code enforcement. And I guarantee you, if any of you want to drive with me, I'll pay for the gas and I will show you all the code violations within a couple blocks. When are you guys going to take it serious that San Bernardino has a problem? Please, think about it. And I throw it out there, I throw a number out there, and I say 40. Now, that may be in the beginning. It's just like getting your house cleaned. It's going to cost you a lot more for a deep cleaning, but after that deep cleaning, then it becomes cheaper. But when Captain Lawhead had the quality of life, he, he never spent any money. Code enforcement never cost the city any money. So why don't you just get out there and get more code enforcement officers? Please, I beg of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening again, honorable members of the council, honorable mayor, our neighbors, residents, people of the city of San Bernardino. I've come here today to urge an approval on the item under discussion in favor of 30 extra affordable housing units for our veterans. As many people know, veterans have a disproportionately high rate of existence in our unhoused and homeless population, so this is something that would really take a, a good chip out of the problem. And as Commissioner Hartley himself touched on upon before, despite the years that we've had a state of homelessness emergency, we've still had, in absolute terms, an increase in the unhoused population here in the city of San Bernardino. The last point in time count indicated that across San Bernardino County, there's roughly a 10% decrease, but our absolute number still increased within the city environs. And so with that being the case, I do think that this is a wonderful option. It's something we can do in Ward Tudor really eat away at the problem, so I would strongly urge a yes vote in favor of that. And for items for future discussion, I saw several interesting items there as well that I look forward to hearing extra regulatory clarity on. But in particular, I urge consideration of the item having to do with elaborating on a paving schedule for the city of San Bernardino. Our potholes are, as I like to call them, taxes on our working families. We've had studies indicate that the average working family across the United States, if they were to hit a pothole, if they were to have an unexpected expense, that they unfortunately wouldn't have the $300 to $500 necessary to cover. It's an emergency expense. It would have to go down to further consumer debt. It would have to literally go on a credit card or a payment plan. And on a very personal level, as somebody who has had a negative relationship with potholes in this community and in the city of San Bernardino, I would strongly urge that paving schedule be made public. So, thank you very much and thank you so much. You have to give credit where credit is due for that unanimous vote on the alcohol license being denied. Thank you for helping the people of the Second Ward and of San Bernardino. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Council. My name is Georgia. I'm here to speak on the animals, you know. In October, we saw 415 dead animals. 229 were killed by staff, 160 arrived deceased, 26 died in our custody, and we now have a total of 3,978 dead animals for the year. That's a lot of animals. It's a lot of animals for the month, it's a lot of animals for the year. What are we doing? I don't see any difference. Watson jumped ship and now we have Deputy Director Glover vying for position of director. I hear that she's trying to, you know, find her way in, in this department and do better for us. She's had two years. What has she done for us? I find that she's been, she's, she has euthanized animals, been part of procedures that a deputy director has no part of. It's deviant. It's not the role we want for our city. I know you are actively seeking a director and I'm hoping that you are asking the right questions such as, what is their plan to help our city? Anyone can come in here and BS us, but if they don't have, and I can tell you Jasmine doesn't have because she hasn't implemented any of it, what is the, what are they going to do to make things better for our city, for our animals? I mean, I'm going on three years now coming here to you guys and nothing has changed. Apple Valley Animal Shelter has just been filed with a lawsuit and I can tell you, there are far more allegations against this city than Apple Valley, so it is pending, you know, it is imminent that this city will be sued as well. I see there's a homeless handout over here. Since I started coming almost three years ago, we've been talking about this homeless situation. And all I see is stuff on paper. And like everyone says, it has not improved. I've seen millions of dollars, just like animal services, millions of dollars flow through here and nothing has changed. The homeless situation, nothing has changed. You know, I, I think that you really need to focus on the street homeless and a lot of those people have animals. And those animals need to be helped. Can we get an update on when those kennels will go into place and house some animals? And that they are air-controlled? Please, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
I'm James Smith, the chairman of the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission. We're doing a lot of exciting things here in the city of San Bernardino. We meet on the third Monday at City Hall on the third floor. Our speaker this month is going to be Lynn Merrill, who's doing a tremendous job with Public Works. I invite everyone to come by at 4:00 on the third Monday on the third floor of City Hall to hear his presentation. I wanted to reiterate some positive things that are happening in the city of San Bernardino. We all went to the Mount Vernon Bridge dedication. We attended the City of San Bernardino event at California Theater. This was under his guidance. Couple other things that are on his agenda, and I want to compliment him on the staff that he has. He kept the people on the staff that are energized. He's not doing it by himself. He's doing it with his staff to do positive things for the city of San Bernardino. The next project that he's looking at is City Hall. Hopefully, in the future, in the next six or seven months, we'll be actually meeting at our City Hall. This is on his agenda. The last thing that he is addressing in the future, probably next year, is the Carousel Mall. Those are the things that he's talking about. He'll be sharing those thoughts at the next meeting of the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission on the third Monday of this month. Please come by at 4:00 to hear his presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, this is Luis Ojeda again. Well, I want to repeat myself now that we denied the legalizing. So to go and check those businesses that sell alcohol and make sure they're complying with the conditions for landscaping and to keep their places clean. So now, a lot of people talks about code enforcement, and I have too. But we have two groups in the city. The ones that you want code enforcement to go and penalize people and then you have the other group to say, oh, how are you going to go against the poor people, right? Okay. So, but this is what we do, right? Since, you know, we are the change. I'm the president and founder, we are the change. And I think most of you guys have participated in cleaning up the city throughout the years. And, you know, we came back bigger and stronger and we collaborated with Councilwoman Sandra Abara with code enforcement and several businesses, that some of them, they're not even from the city, to help a family in need that have problems getting their, their houses, you know, you know, a beautification, restoration project. And today, I wanted to thank many of them that participated with us. So first of all, I want to congratulate code enforcement for collaborating with us as well with Sandra Abara, Councilwoman. Also, we are the change. SV 909 Construction, Triple H Construction, M&amp;M Landscape, Nice and Clean Painting, R&amp;R Fence, Vertec, Mr. Stragome, J. Lou, RR Studio, and All For His Glory. All of these people, that many of them, they don't even live or do business in San Bernardino, and they came here to help. And I feel that we can replicate this because something that happened in this particular street after we were done with this project, everybody in this block is starting sweeping and cleaning up their street. Also, the harvest, you know, there were some dead trees in the area. They went over there, they cut her off, they grind them, and then planning to, to plant new trees. So also, we've been working and collaborating with Public Works in our beautification project. So, this is what I want to tell everyone. Yeah, maybe a thousand more code enforcers going to help, but how about those people that don't have the means or the resources to do the, the repairs or to fix their properties? What should we do about them? Why don't you join us and help them and help themselves and at the same time, we'll do something for our city? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Mayor, council members. Good afternoon. Buenas tardes, or good evening now. I am Dr. Nancy Acevedo. I'm professor at California State University, San Bernardino, in the Educational Leadership doctoral studies program in the College of Education. And today, I am going to be talking to you as a researcher whose area of expertise is in college access and college going, college success, but also as a parent. I just want to highlight for us the area of Shannon Hills Golf Course. And I'm not, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions or not, but if, if you are able to interact, if any of you will raise your hand if you've ever golfed before. And actually, everyone in the room, raise your hand if you've ever golfed before. I, I will lower my hand because I have never golfed before, except for Topgolf. But I, I do understand the value of golf, right? In our society, in our U.S. society. My daughters golf. They're 13 and 10. They started golfing because their dad took them to start golfing. And we know, we've heard earlier, different people commenting on the need to beautify San Bernardino, right? And I just thought how beautifully aligned that was to be able to highlight this. We know also that historically, golf has been an exclusionary and an elitist space. But that is where important decisions are made, right? That is where a lot of decisions happen. So if we don't have access to golf courses and to the skills to navigate the golf course, we are often excluded from those decisions. So San Bernardino has the opportunity to change some of that exclusion for the next generation. generations. There are kids who are using Shannon Hills Golf Course through Sixty-One Golf and San Bernardino City Unified School District. They are brokering access to cultural capital and social capital. It's going to be a long-term investment, is going to have long-term effects. We know this, not just for those who may aspire to be professional golfers, but really when they enter the career world, right? We know that it's going to have an, an, an impact. At the same time, while this is an amazing opportunity, the area needs immediate attention. The restrooms are overflowing, so you have these little kids there who are trying to be, you know, top golf, who are being told you belong here in these previously exclusionary spaces, but also you can't use the restroom, right? And so this is due to who is managing the space. It is a public golf course, it is a rec golf course. Um, so again, we have this rare gem here in the city of San Bernardino, and I just want to highlight the potential long-term benefits, both educational, what it means for students, educational-wise and career-wise, and just highlight the possibility of, for you all, to get on your radar, to think about how can we invest in this space in the future and acknowledge that we might think golf and we might not think this group back here. But just what a diverse and, and beautiful representation of San Bernardino that you have here and the opportunity that you have to support that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Mayor. Councilwoman?
Yeah, just if I might. One, I want to thank the community for coming. That's actually my ward, Dominic. I know we've met prior. City Manager, is it possible that you can have staff actually talk? You know, we've been working with the Shannon Hills Golf Course, but I think the community that is really concerned about that course really does owe some conversation from our city staff in regards to what we've been working on. So if you could see that that happens, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Joe Sales, fourth ward. First of all, we're in Veterans Day, so early, happy early Veterans Day. I believe Councilmember Charette is the only one who has proudly served our country, so thank you, Councilmember Charette, for your service to our country. Yesterday, I hope everyone voted. I don't know how, if you like the results or not like, but just have, to have voting and veterans juxtaposed next to each other with so closely that we understand that freedom's not free. Also, coming up, we are in now Native American Heritage Month, so our brothers and sisters of the UVA Hattam people and all of another native people who are in our community, let's remember their, their continued, uh, what they give to our community and everything that we do, and thank them for everything they do. Recently, uh, I got to attend a, a town hall, and you wouldn't think where this town hall would be. The Police Department. It was a pretty amazing, uh, event. I want to thank, first of all, Lieutenant Plummer and Sergeant Castro for brokering this with about thirteen residents who live up in the area of Skylark and Esertown. And for those who don't know where that is, it's near the former castaways now known as the Hilltop Banquet. And there is many residents there who are concerned about, and this is something for the entire neighborhood, so, but they're really getting it up there, with three properties that are used frequently as, what is known in the law as, um, short-term rentals, but more, um, the commercial name with the, the popular name, it's like calling Tissue Kleenex, is Airbnb. And at these three properties, uh, people continue to violate many things within the city. And we got some really good proactive steps that the Police Department is looking at to ameliorate the quality of life for the residents who live up in that area. And, but we had to continue to look at this, because I know that the City Council's been looking at this for about six years, and specifically up in the Esertown Skylark area for about two years. And there is some recommendations for you guys, especially Councilman Sanchez, and for everyone who else is not paying attention. Here you go. Number one, many other cities use parking districts. If you go to Los Angeles, places like Hollywood and other areas, um, and neighborhoods like Brentwood, they use parking districts. And it doesn't limit parking to the residents who live within those areas. You can give four to five guest parking decals for those areas, and that would help, especially up there on Skylark and Ridgeline. For those who haven't driven up there before, I don't think that that development would be made in any other part of the city nowadays, because it, the, I mean, about three weeks ago, there was a gentleman who drove a, uh, I want to say, it wasn't UPS, FedEx truck right off the road. And it was a pretty traumatic for everyone who was concerned.
Thank you.
That was three minutes. Wow, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, my name is Dolores, and I brought my friend back, because he wanted to see you in person, all you people up there. First, I want to give a shout out and thank you for the city staff, because the work you do in spite of what goes on around you, we thank you. We, as the citizens, truly thank you and appreciate everything you've done. My next one is, uh, your item, I think, is eighteen, the Crush and Grind, uh, Oxbow Project. It was clear at the last meeting that you were going to push the Crush and Grind. We could tell because you obviously directed the Planning Director to spend thirty seconds on hauling away and almost half an hour on the great wonderful benefits of Crush and Grind. So we knew you were going to pass that. Despite the residents that were here and begging you, begging you, please haul that crap away. That didn't happen. Ward five, you actually had the audacity to make a statement to the media that your constituents have no problem with Crush and Grind despite the testimonies that you had here. Despite that, Valdivia got paid to dump the crap, and now you're going to continue to build housing on contaminated soil? I'm going to, I'm praying for you guys. I'm praying for wards one through five and the mayor. I am praying that you, well, first, I'm praying that the developers and contractors that you're dealing with and you and your families suffer the same illnesses, cancer ailments that you inflicted on your residents, that you get the same, you and your families get the same, that you have approved to inflict on the people that reside there, on the people that you want to buy a residence on contaminated soil. I pray that you get the same results in your health and your ailments that you have inflicted on your residents. I pray to God and my Jesus that you get blessed the same way you've blessed them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor Tran and Councilmembers. At our last council meeting, City Manager Levitt presented a list of contracts he had entered into, including the names of the contractors. I appreciate this transparency. However, I am compelled to raise a serious question. Can I ask City Manager Levitt, has the City Council, Mayor Tran, Councilmember Sanchez, Figueroa, E. Barra, and most importantly, Councilmember Charette, have ever disclosed or acknowledged former interim City Manager Clayton's workplace harassment claim with you? Ms. Clayton reported overhearing conversations between former City Manager Montoya, Deputy City Manager Susie Soren, related to an employee investigation. The JL Group, which conducted that investigation, initially found no wrongdoing, but was instructed to continue searching. Ms. Clayton also informed the council and mayor that she had spoken with BBK Attorney Baltimore and Irma Moya Rodriguez. Attorney Rodriguez reportedly warned that the JL Group's methods could pose legal risks, stating their interviews were structured, that the interviewers backing the interviewers into desired outcomes. Councilmember Charette personally followed up with Attorney Rodriguez to confirm his concerns, her concerns. He later met with Ms. Clayton and asked whether all prior investigations conducted by the JL Group should be reevaluated in light of this information. Ms. Clayton confirmed they should. Councilmember Charette then asked whether this applied specifically to the report involving Councilmember Calvin, myself. And again, Ms. Clayton said yes. Given these facts, I must ask, why does City Manager Levitt continue to contract with the JL Group despite clear warnings from legal counsel and multiple council members? Is this goal truly transparency and fairness, or is it to shield the city from accountability at the expense of employees and elected officials? Why have the mayor and council members who were made aware of Ms. Clayton's claim and the concerns surrounding JL Group's practices failed to govern themselves accordingly? Why was eight hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money paid to Steve Kerrigan based on reports that were known to be questionable and false? I firmly believe that the JL Group's investigations are being used to target council and staff members in order to protect council and the mayor from, from personal scrutiny. Mayor Tran and Councilmember Sanchez, Figueroa, E. Barra, and Charette were all informed of these concerns, and the JL Group's failure to act reflects a serious breach of ethical responsibility, and they should all be reminded at the ballot box.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Carmen Diegoz, Dulce Becerra, Frank Becerra, Ray Lassence, Malina Enriquez, Ethan Lapore, Carmel Rowe, Dorothy Bernhard, Michael Segura, Miriam Nieto, Orlando Sorian, Les, Tim Prince, and Dominique Gutierrez.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Dulce Becerra. I'm part of the Blair Park Neighborhood Association Board. And first, I want to thank the city and the staff for the new initiatives to beautify our city, especially the Love Your Block mini-grants that we, we got to participate in la, um, this last season. This shows that San Bernardino cares about revitalizing our neighborhoods and investing in community pride. In that same spirit, I want to highlight the value of Shannon Hills Golf Course as a vital community asset. The city, this city-owned course is more than just a recreational facility, it's a community asset that serves over a thousand local school district students each year, each year. My kids, right there, those two right there, um, they are one of the many of those kids that, um, participate in for physical education, after-school programs, and youth golf instruction. And for many of them, it's their first introduction to the game and to the life lessons that come with it. Patience, focus, sportsmanship. Shannon Hills has been a gem in our community. My older sister hosted her fortieth birthday party there. Locals have used the space for weddings, school dances, celebrations, and our own BPNA hosts their community meetings there. Beyond this educational impact, Shannon Hills has generated revenue for the city of San Bernardino through recreation fees, food and beverage sales, the pro-shop, and hosted events such as tournaments and community gatherings. With proper maintenance and promotion, it has the potential to be a thriving source of both economic and social value once again. Investing in Shannon Hills is an investment in our youth, our local economy, and our city's reputation for supporting recreation and education. I urge the council to continue supporting this course as a public asset for the benefit and current, of the current and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Bernhard, and, um, ditto for what she just said. Um, our son also is involved in the golf course and, um, taking lessons in Sixty-One Golf for the EXL After-School Program. But, um, the other thing I want to say is that, over the past two years that they've been playing, the golf course has gone downhill. And, um, to me, that's very sad. I've lived here, um, over forty years, and I live in the Cal State area, and I drive by on the freeway. And I used to like to look at the golf course, and I used to think, gosh, this is before I ever was involved in golf, um, any of that. But I used to drive by, and I was, you know, on the freeway, and I'd think, oh, that is so beautiful. And, and it was so beautiful. And now I drive by, getting to get off the freeway, and I think, wow, that is so sad. And I see that, you know, our parks are really improving tremendously. And, um, I just don't understand, I guess, why the maintenance of the golf course has gone downhill. And, um, it's as though it's a second thought, that it doesn't really matter. And it matters to our kids, it matters to a lot of adults also. And, um, you know, the, the building isn't even able to have weddings or, um, you can't, you know, it's in such disrepair. And, you know, my sister had a retirement party there, I've been to weddings there. My kids, my older kids had their eighth grade dances, you know, end-of-the-year dance there. And now none of that is happening because it's not being taken care of. And, you know, I have heard that there was rumors of them closing it and building, buildings on it. And, um, you know, I think that would be the worst thing that could have happened for San Bernardino, you know? And I don't know if that's a true rumor, but I would just ask you that if that is a thought in your, um, in your plans, that you would please demolish that thought and, and get it out of there. The other thing I want to say is, my son is playing high school golf now, and, um, the golf course needs work. There's floods, there's pipes, not pipes, sprinklers that aren't, aren't, um, working. But the other schools come to San Bernardino to play, and they're from affluent, richer areas, and they look down on San Bernardino to begin with, but they look down on our children because of where they play and what it looks like. And, um, I, that just breaks my heart. And we all know how kids are meant to.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Frank Becerra. Uh, thank you very much, everyone here, council, for doing this, uh, two nights, uh, a month. It's a tough job. Um, but I wanted to say that my wife and I worked, moved here into our starter home in the Blair Park area fourteen years ago, and we're still here. When we moved here, we, we thought we'd be, we'd be here for a couple of years. But no, we love the community, we love our neighbors, we love our neighborhood, and our Neighborhood Association. So we're both active members of the Blair Park Neighborhood Association. And we've had the, the privilege of working alongside most of you there, um, in our community, um, in, in our city, and it's, it's a very, it's a deep privilege and honor. But one of the big things that brought us to our home, one of the big selling points was Shannon Hills Golf Course. And when we moved in, it was a beautiful green space. Uh, it had a thriving event center. Um, and some of our events were there. I was, went to Cal State, and we had several club events there. Golf tournaments. I'm a volunteer member of the San Bernardino Sheriff's Department Search and Rescue Team out of Central Station, and we used to host our golf tournaments there regularly, as did many other, uh, law enforcement, uh, agencies, and just other tournaments in general. So it's, it's, it's a hub, it's a vital part of the community. It's a gem, not only of San Bernardino, uh, but of the county as well. And as the previous speaker mentioned, other kids, other golfers come here to our city. And we don't get to say that a lot, they come here to recreate. And so we do need to put our, our best foot forward. We're, we're losing golf courses. Rialto lost a golf course. We lost a golf course in, uh, South San Bernardino. And it, it doesn't look good, not for the past three or four years. Little upkeep, little promotion, but it still can be a gem. We have golfers, you see, we have a lot of golfers here. We have great programs, like Sixty-One Golf. Um, we still have residents that are care and, uh, that are willing to be part of the revival. They put in sweat equity, and I, I've worked, uh, with you on the council, and you put in sweat equity. We're willing to do what's needed. Uh, we just want to make sure that you're aware of the condition, but what it can be. San Bernardino needs a win, we need, we need things to show off, and this definitely is something that we can show off. Blair Park Neighborhood Association will be right there, Sixty-One Golf. And in fact, a lot of the coaches at Sixty-One Golf, uh, they do some of the work of the landscapers, so I think every Monday or Tuesday, they'll go down there and they will actually cut some of the grass. So thank you very much, and I hope you guys get a chance to get out there and enjoy it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Michael Segura. I'm also a Commissioner for the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, but tonight I'm here speaking on behalf of the Garcia Center for the Arts as the Executive But tonight, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Garcia Center for the Arts as the Executive Director. I'm also here speaking for our arts collaborative responsible for moving forward the East Street Corridor Cultural District Initiative and the state designation from the California Arts Council. It's a grant that we applied for. First, I just want to thank sincerely the city for being a partner in this and supporting us meeting the deadlines. We didn't have a city manager at the time when we first moved forward, and Parks and Recs came through, and so did the Economic Development Department, understanding the potential of this designation. And we just wanted to thank you all for also hosting a community listening session actually here at the Central Library. It was here at Feldheim. So, you know, Feldheim, good old Feldheim. This collaboration marks a major step towards recognizing the East Street Corridor as a vibrant center for arts, culture, local pride, and economic development. We're proud to be working alongside Arts Connection, San Bernardino Generation Now, Three Little Bluebirds Boutique, Creative Grounds, and Relicor, as well as many local artists, businesses, and residents who have contributed to the community visioning process. Together, we've identified more than 380 cultural assets that tell the story of San Bernardino's creativity, resilience, and identity, from murals to historic theaters to small cultural driving businesses, to gardens, to gathering places of all types. This partnership between the city and our newly-formed Arts Collaborative demonstrates what is possible when we unite around shared values of inclusion, cultural preservation, and community-led revitalization. With your continued collaboration, we can ensure that the East Street Corridor grows in a way that celebrates local culture, supports artists, small businesses, and keeps opportunity rooted right here in our neighborhoods. Again, want to thank everyone involved in making this happen and being able to turn in this grant. We're working on releasing a public report regarding the listening sessions and cultural asset map, and we'll be sure to send that to you when it's completed. We will be hearing back from the state if we get the designation from the state December, January next year. But we're not waiting for that. We're continuing to move forward and following up with the city manager's office to bring his department up to date with all that has taken place. Our next steps in this partnership is to designate this district with or without the state, and we're hoping to continue to work with you. So thank you. And just Garcia Center-related events coming up, we have our 10-year anniversary happening. November 14th, we have a gala dinner, and then the next day is a community celebration. This coming Saturday, RAFMA, there's going to be a community art show coming up, exhibition. So check that out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, I'm Ray LaSance. Thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the people here for hearing me tonight. I came here to talk about the conditions of Shannon Hills. When I first moved here from the state of Iowa about 19 years ago, I was concerned with my wife because I thought, where am I going to golf? You know, that's the big thing all now is all these golf courses and beautiful courses that we have. And somebody said, go try Shannon Hills. It was beautiful. I mean, the trees and everything were kept up well. Right now, and if any of you want me to take you out to the course, and we'll drive around in the car, I'll show you all the things that are needed to be repaired, kept up, things like that. Just going, starting from the tee-off areas, they're all burnt out, they're hard as a rock. You can hardly get the tea in. And then as you head down the course, you go to the sand traps, they're supposed to be soft as a beach, they're hard like cement. Then you move closer to the green, they have high grass up near the green area, which is supposed to be, you're able to hit a ball. If you hit a ball straight, it's supposed to roll on the green, it doesn't. Then when you get to the course itself, the greens are the worst that I ever saw in my life. I mean, we've had a few problems out in Iowa with certain weeds growing, fungus infections and things like that. They just called the proper people. They came in, they sprayed something down that took care of all that aspect there, and it went on to become a beautiful green. But I've been going here probably 19 years since I've been going here, and I've seen, like Frank says, the closing of golf courses, Rialto, the One Down and Waterman, both were beautiful courses. And I just think it hurts you economically in every which way, and just the beauty like the first person was talking about of a golf course, to take that away. But again, I can explain it all to you, but the worst thing are the greens. I mean, my son and I went out and tried to play. Usually, I try to break 80 most of the time, but it was impossible. I must have usually tried to putt within like 20, 25 putts at the green. We must have had like 50. There are big weed spots out there, there are big holes in the green. All it really needs is upkeep. There are long grass right in the middle of the fairway. I hit two balls in there, and I lost both of them. Couldn't find them, didn't bother to go in. That's not golfing. That's just playing in a pasture, like we say out now. So really, I would like, I hope everybody considers, just maybe considering reopening the bids for somebody to take over. I know I've talked to some people in Yucapu, the Runyon Coop Valley. They were interested the last time. It never got taken up for bids for them, and they said they would put one in. So look for other ways to take care of it. Evidently, it must be too hard to manage two courses, which they're doing. And we need to keep this course alive, to keep San Bernardino alive and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hello, council and mayor. Good evening. My name is Miriam Nieto. I am a resident of the Seventh Ward and a member of Sam New Generation Now. Sam New Generation Now is a movement of residents that have been focused on improving our community through civic engagement, through civic engagement through the arts since 2013. All of our efforts have been led as volunteers purely. Today, I am here to discuss the event that occurred October 24th. On that day, the California Arts Council, a state entity, visited San Bernardino to listen to our community about our vision for the East Street Corridor Cultural District. The session lasted one hour and was attended by our city manager, Eric Levitt, Councilmember Juan Figueroa, Councilmember Ted Sanchez, and Kenesha Void representing Mayor Helen Tran. We are grateful to everyone who attended. Your presence demonstrated unity and appreciation for our community. Thank you. Thank you for sharing, also, thank you for staying the entire discussion. You showed respect for our community members by listening to all of their diverse perspectives, beliefs, and dreams for this corridor. We are hopeful that with the ongoing efforts of artists, cultural leaders, San Bernardino residents, and small businesses, including the National Orange Show, the San Bernardino School District, Creative Grounds, Barrio Fuerza, The Pulse, Three Little Bluebirds Boutique, the Garcia Center for the Arts, Arts Connection, San Bernardino Parks and Recs, Relicor, and the city of San Bernardino, we can achieve receiving the Cultural District Designation for the East Street Corridor. This designation will help us secure funding for cultural and economic opportunities in the area. It would also support affordable housing around the designated area. Once again, I want to thank everyone who showed their support and love for our community by attending the sessions. And I also just want to add that we've been, I think the theme today that has been spread in the community has been beautification and really taking care of community. And I think that this is a really good way, through arts, through civic engagement, and through the community coming together, that's how you improve a community, through that beautification process. In this East Street Corridor, you're going to see that economic development. And also, I want to note that in some of these cultural district corridors, gentrification also happens. But I think that we have a good group here that involves residents of the city of San Bernardino, local businesses, as well as the city, which would really support a conversation around how can we keep some of these cultural assets that we have and that we have found through some of the listening sessions to really build on our city, build on the district, and build on our culture instead of extracting and leaving our community out. So again, I just want to thank you all for being a part of this, joining us, and just making sure that we continue these efforts together, and this is the way that we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Yes, I'm Carmen Gallegos. I live right, a couple blocks from the police station. Anyways, I'm ongoing, calling, different things happen all the time. So I still have to need to address the fire situation. A lot of times, the people that they hire are the ones causing the problem. And also today's, like I said, they haven't, you know, they haven't fixed my fire alarm or gas alarm. They become slum lards. And the people that they hire, which is sad today, I saw one of the people they hire, his name is Francisco, and he was sick. And he also was sneezing around some other tenants, that they were addressing some electric issue. But he also was painting too, and he had no mask. And a lot of times, you don't realize, I didn't know about masks too much until COVID came. And then I had to address other issues, which I'm glad it gets resolved one at a time. So again, but like I said, I need to get a code enforcement. I know they probably need like a brigade of people to get this done, even adopt a block. Each of these blocks should be adopted. And for each of your wards or a mayor, like I said, and I like that they attended to some of the alcohol problems, because really, it should start at the church and the schools, private and public, because they also make it worse for public and use the public's resources against each other. And then they point fingers to each other. So again, church or bar, school or bar. So again, they need to go back to prayer and the resources to help the people out. Rehab or putting alcohol on their hands too. So they need to take those licenses away from each one of those before they step up because they added to the problem and use the public's police force for their private use, and that's wrong. They should use it for occasions, but not where they're stepping, they're not stepping up for themselves. Their license should be revoked too, liquor license, because that stepped into abuse at high levels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arco, Arco, hey, Arco did give some gas cards for job interviews and classes, just so you know.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Orlando Soriano, mayor, city council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm also here to talk about Shannon Hills Golf Club, but more on the impact that it has on the youth. This is my daughter and my son. He is a player at the Cajon Golf Team. He grew up on that course. He got introduced to golf by a program, it's called 61, that works with the district. And on the weekends, they take the kids out to, what is it, mingle, socialize, mentally exercise their minds, I mean, the exercise, physical exercise. But it's just more the impact that it has on the kids, on the community, that, you know, it's just something else to do on the weekends, something that is going to help them mentally, physically. It makes us parents socialize, even if sometimes we don't want to see each other's face. It's just, it's a good moment to talk about what's going on in our community. To touch on the conditions of the actual golf course, you guys got Cal State San Bernardino down the street from Shannon Hills Golf Clubs, that their home course is actually in Beaumont. How does that make sense? Even though their condition on the golf course is bad, they get to play in it. We're grateful for that. But when the other schools come out and play, compared to the courses they actually get to play in their home school, it's a big advantage that they have. And we're taking that advantage from good golf players in the community. You'll be amazed how good these kids are. I would put a lot of these kids that are learning from 61, just to be, being able to give that opportunity to play, that are better than a lot of adults in here. That's how good it is, and that's how much impact it has had in the community. And I just wish that you guys would consider investing in it and just making it better conditions for these kids to be able to enjoy it and actually get the right, I don't know how to say it, just get the right feeling of what golf really is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Ethan Lapore. I'm 19 years old, and I'm a member of the Youth Advisory Board of San Bernardino. And the topic that I would like to discuss is item number 17 on the list, the approval for the loan to make new affordable housing units for our homeless veterans. I'm just going to say, veterans, they really, they really need like this funding, which I believe is in the amount of $4 million for this affordable housing, as there isn't enough to house all of them here in San Bernardino. And that's not good. They need a safe place to live and sleep. As most, and as most of you know, San Bernardino is not, is not safe at night, just because of all of the homeless people that we already have in this city. And, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these veterans that are homeless and on the streets, they have PTSD from being like in like war or just war environments in general. PTSD is a very serious mental health condition, and they need help with that. And it can be triggered by any loud noise, such as like car backfires in the middle of the night, even sometimes like shootings in the area that could occur, could take them back, give them flashbacks to back when they were in places like Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria. And when they get those flashbacks, they can cause them, again, it's a serious trouble because they genuinely believe that they are in a completely different place and start acting in a way that they don't need or shouldn't. This could cause the police to be called on them. Police may not understand someone having a PTSD episode, and it could turn very dangerous for the police and the veteran, and the veteran himself, especially if the veteran is armed with a gun. It would be, it could turn potentially deadly, and we could, and we could end up having a dead veteran, and nobody wants that, when all they needed was just a safe place to sleep so that they could get back on their feet. I myself am planning to go into the military soon, in the Air Force, and if, and I'm also currently homeless, I want to be able to have, like, when I come back from boot camp or possible deployment, I want to be able to have a safe place to come back to and not be homeless living on the streets. We, we just really need, we just really need this funding. Just please approve this for our veterans so that they could have a safe place to sleep. And just, this just would really help us out. So just, I really ask that you approve of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
We have a major homeless problem in our city and county. It's visible, it's heartbreaking, and it's growing. Until we correct it, we can build fast-food restaurants all day long, approve more strip malls, or celebrate ribbon cuttings, but that will not solve the deeper issue plaguing our community. Let's be honest about what's happening. According to the National Low-Income Housing Coalition, there is no city, county, or state in the United States where a minimum-wage worker can afford a two-bedroom apartment on a single income, not one. And yet, we expect people to survive, often with children, while working full-time jobs that don't even pay enough to cover the rent. When food stamps are cut, when emergency rental assistance dries up, when families face medical bills or car repairs from potholes, they're left with a brutal choice: feed their kids or pay their rent. That's not a hypothetical. That's real life for thousands of people right here in San Bernardino City and County. Most of us are just one paycheck away from being homeless. We have to stop pretending that homelessness only happens to those people. It can happen to your neighbor, your child, a senior, a veteran, even you. Let me explain what homelessness really looks like. A young adult who gets aged out of foster care and has nowhere to go, a mother fleeting domestic violence with her children, a veteran with trauma untreated, a senior living in their car because they can't afford rent on Social Security, a full-time fast-food worker who can't make ends meet. Better yet, your 19-year-old son or daughter who wants to go to college, move out and live on their own, but realizes rent alone is more than their entire paycheck. What future are they supposed to build? These aren't statistics, these are people, and we failed them. We've issued grants, we've announced projects, we've promised housing, but where is it? Why are people still living in tents next to boarded-up buildings or on most pieces of vacant land in the city? Let me ask you directly, why did the former Assistant City Manager of San Bernardino return un-funds that could have housed 224 people? Why have we watched years of announcements about housing units that never break ground? Why do we criminalize the unhoused for surviving instead of giving them shelter, safety, and dignity? Let me tell you what I've seen. I've been to many other cities and states in the last two months: Nevada, Arizona, Northern California, Texas, Utah, New Mexico, and many others. None of them have homeless as visible or neglected as San Bernardino. So I ask you, why is homeless so present in our city? Since it is, why aren't we leading on solutions? I'm not here to just point out the problem. I'm here with a comprehensive plan to solve it, which I have a two-part plan, which I did give to you guys. It provides wraparound. It provides wraparound services, it calls for help from all of our community members, our churches. And why this plan matters is because it will reduce police calls, EMS transports, jail stays, and emergency costs. It'll clean our streets, parks, businesses, and corridors. We spent years, millions of dollars on these short-term Band-Aids. Let's stop wasting time, stop watching our city unravel. Let's come together, government, churches, nonprofits, tribal leadership, and everyday citizens to do what no county has done before. Let's do it all together. Let's not be known for what we tolerate, let's be known for what we transform.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
My name is Melina, thank you for your time. So, affordable housing for anyone is important, but affordable housing for veterans is helping those who protected America. As a Youth Advisory Board Advocate, I stand behind the choice of affordable housing. With services on site, the city of San Bernardino can be part of helping our veterans heal. I'm a youth that struggles with homelessness, and it's hard because I am villainized in private circles and in public circles. If I share that little bit of detail with anybody, people kind of look at me a little differently. But I'm no criminal. I'm here to help, and I want to help advocate for our veterans who are dealing with, with homelessness. Our homelessness population in San Bernardino is incredibly high, incredibly high. Not as high as other places, sure, but it's still a big concern that I have, and I want us to genuinely look at ourselves and see what can we do? We have so many resources available, but is it enough? Are there any enough that are, genuinely, are there any that are enough to help our veterans, our American heroes? No matter what side of the political party you stand, you have to understand that these people fought to protect our country, and they deserve to come home to a warm bed and a warm meal, regardless of anything that you believe politically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please state your name.
Good evening, thank you, mayor, city council, city staff. My name is Dominic Gutierrez. I am a local San Bernardino native, community member. I'm part of the 61 crew, all the kids golfing. Number one, I do want to thank you guys. I have been in this city my whole life, I don't plan on leaving, and it is better, it's a lot better, because of the effort that you guys put in, because of the effort that the staff puts in. There's a lot of things that are happening, and a lot of this conversation has been about which direction to take the growth, and how do we, which way do we go with it? There has been communication, I know, about the opportunity to remove Shannon Hills Golf Club, right? And if it's feasible to hold two golf courses here in the city and all that stuff. Number one, green spaces. Only 45% of San Bernardinoans have access to a park within 10 minutes. Another half of those people won't even go to the park because it's dangerous. Shannon Hills doesn't have those problems. The people that go to the golf course, the people that are around the golf course, it brings a whole different environment. I could talk about the positive aspects of golf all day. If you guys haven't played, come out with us, every Sunday we're there. You guys are more welcome to go play, council members. But what I'm really concerned about is how the golf course got to the situation it's in. I was the starter for the golf course, so from 2019 until 2021, when LGM, Local Golf Management, who is a part-owner of Arrowhead Country Club, the only competition for the golf course in the city, took over. They removed me for my, what they said was talking bad about the company, because I could obviously see that we were going to have a conflict of interest. Now, not to blame the council, but obviously a mistake was made where the only competing company of golf is managing public space that was donated to the constituents of San Bernardino by a hogder warden back in the day, right? So, Mayor Tran, one of the, the lady who's managing Fariae Win over at that golf course is literally using your name to say that you gave her the golf course. And since that time happened, it's obvious that they are the reason the golf course has come to such a place. It's more than obvious. During 2020, this, we happened to be the only golf course around that was open. We, sales were through the roof. Shannon Hills has not only competed with Arrowhead Country Club, but Arrowhead Country Club is not a country club anymore because their service wasn't able to produce the amount of people that needed to stay in the country club. They have gone from private to public multiple times, and it's strictly because of their business ethics. We were killing it at Shannon Hills. People drove from all over the county and the state to come to the city, to come to stay in Shannon Hills. It's one of the things that people would come to San Bernardino to do. Now, I know the problem is that the city didn't know what was going on, and the people weren't involved, but now we're here. The people are here, and we're watching, and we hope you guys will make the right decisions based on that to protect yourselves and to protect the people of San Bernardino. Thank you.
Next speaker, please state your name.
The more I come to these meetings, the more I realize the criminal world and the politic world is the same, they're no different. The meetings still start too early. When are we going to bring back the Zoom? I know Helen Tran, you cut down our public comment, so are you the same person that cut down the Zoom public comment as well? We need to boycott Elon Musk, anything Elon Musk touched, we need to boycott it. AI and robots will be taking our warehouse jobs and truck driving jobs soon, they're saying 2035. What else? The Homeless Resource Center, y'all need to have meetings on Sunday, just like y'all have meetings for the city manager on Sundays. Y'all need to step y'all game up. I feel like y'all lagging on that homeless resource, y'all dropped the ball on that. The OXPO City Attorney, you're full of it. Ortiz was reading the report, and she asked you, did you even read the report? You said, no, and then you turned around and tried to tell her what the report was, was saying in the report. So how could you say that you, how could you tell her what the report is trying to say, but you never even read the report in the first place? So, yeah, so you, you and your company is full of it, we should have been let you guys go. Then the crazy thing, too, Theodore Sanchez, old man Fred, Juan, and John Valdivia voted not to even clean the OXPO, to leave the OXPO where it was at. So that, that was crazy in itself right there, but you know, they all work together, they probably call each other when the meetings are over. Kim Canas, I'm trying to give you a chance, a lot of people, they, they kind of not feeling you, but they trying to give you a chance as well. The reason why, for me personally, was the, you voted down the conversation of the OXPO, even though the community wanted to hear it, and then Ortiz, then you said that you had information that Ortiz didn't have, so you should have put Ortiz on game and told, told her the information, and then told us the information, but you voted it down. And then the other thing, you voted to grind and crush on site, and we already voted not to grind and crush on site anyway, out here in San Bernardino. So you guys are going against what you guys voted on. And then the next thing, to the young Chicano brother who won that Citizen of the Ward, Andy, please don't become a sellout to the young people. If you guys want to get into politics, please don't sell out over money. Please stay on, on your square, it's about the people, it's not about yourselves. What else? Oh, yeah, Mario Flores, man, hey, we need to hear some ideas. You're not doing anything, I don't hear anything, you, you're just putting on at one event, but what about the community? What, what are you doing economically? Are you cleaning it up? When you vote, you looking around, instead of just letting your cajones drop and then vote like a man, but you're not. You're looking around and trying to see what everybody else is doing, so, yeah, man up.
Next speaker, please state your name.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tim Prince, I'm a lifelong resident of San Bernardino. And let me start where the previous gentleman left off. Young Andy, 14 years old, from San Bernardino High School, was an inspiration to all of us. All of you up there have planned events, being in politics, you know how difficult it is. Can you imagine being 14 years old and planning an event with hundreds of people showing up in front of what should be our city hall, what is our city hall? Young man's just amazing. They're doing good things at San Bernardino High School, my alma mater. Unfortunately, you're not all doing good things here. Your agenda is calculated to embarrass one of your colleagues by putting a closed-session matter on meeting after meeting because she has a claim against the city? Why are you doing that? You're not discussing a claim every time. You made a decision whether to settle or not, obviously not. So what's there to discuss? Do the people's business in public. Don't exclude council members with your Sunday meetings and your closed sessions. The voters' sentiment, as we saw yesterday, a lot of frustration. That was an excellent turnout, whether you're for Proposition 50 or against it. What we learned was by a wide margin, people want change, and that's true in the city of San Bernardino, too. You know, this is a pretty good turnout, since it's dark outside. A lot of people don't know that the end of daylight savings is why we set the clocks back in the fall, and there's an, an effort in Congress to make daylight savings time permanent, so we don't have to come to late afternoon meetings in the dark. Our Congress members need to hear from us on that. I think that would greatly benefit the city of San Bernardino. Our evenings are dark enough, our streets downtown have been dark for years. I compliment our Public Works Director for at least trying to get some solar lights up, but there's more than half of the lights downtown are either broken or now very, very dim solar lights. That's not conducive to safety. And what's going on with 40 acres downtown called the Carousel Mall? At city hall, we don't hear any status updates. That should be something at the top of every meeting, telling the public what's going on. If your lawyer's telling you there's nothing you can do because there's a lawsuit pending, you need to get better legal advice, there's always a way to handle legal issues. No court wants 40 acres just sitting in abeyance downtown. You should be back in city hall, you should be doing the people's business in the people's house, and you need to do a little better job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, and we have received written comments, which have been distributed to the mayor and members of the city council for their review. The comments can also be found on our website attached to the agenda packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent calendar, items six to 16. City manager, do you have any items to be pulled from the agenda?
I have none, ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Barra, do you have anything, any items to be pulled?
No pulls.
Thank you. Councilmember Canas?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
If I can make a comment on one item, or I'll pull it.
You'd have to pull.
I'll pull it. Item seven.
Seven, thank you. Councilmember Ortiz?
13.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
None.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flores?
None.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharette?
None, and I'll move the balance.
Thank you. There's a motion, there's a second by Council, Councilmember Ortiz.
I'll take a voice vote for this.
Digital voting?
I'll take a voice vote.
A voice vote? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Consent calendar balance passes unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez, item number seven?
Yes, I don't know who had a chance to read it, but it was very, very, very well put together. It explains a complicated and, and at times frayed, fraught process of the Navigation Center and where we are at it right now. So I want to commend staff. I think, I think it was our very own, who was it? Who was it wrote this staff report?
William.
Was it William? Yeah, I thought so. It's a very well-written staff report. It's a great example of the talent we have amongst our ranks, so I wanted to acknowledge that, that I, I saw the quality in that staff report. Move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion, and there's a second by Councilmember Sharette.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Sharette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
And Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item is item 13. Before we do proceed, I need to announce that to comply with the Levine Act, there are members of the body that needs to recuse themselves. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to say before we proceed?
Yes, so, the Levine Act, there's kind of a gray area about if budgetary action falls within its purview, but it's something that the FPPC is currently looking into. Our advice is to be conservative, and anyone who recused themselves and left the room when the agreement was being considered should do so for this item also.
And just for the public's application, the recusal is due to Levine Act and any member who received over $500 donation from, in this case, this is San Manuel, would have to recuse themselves, correct? Whether you're a voting member or non-voting member.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
I just want to note, because I did recuse myself voluntarily last time, however, I am no longer within the confinement of the Levine Act, so I will not be recusing myself this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I need to recuse myself for this item. I received campaign contributions exceeding $500 from the Javier Tom of San Manuel. While the Levine Act excludes contracts with government agencies, and I believe the tribe should be exempt as a government agency and a sovereign nation, I must recuse myself because at the time, at this current time, the state law does not appear to exempt the tribe.
Thank you. Councilmember Sharette?
Yes, I, I too, the same as my colleague Sanchez.
Thank you. And I will be recusing myself because I did receive funds by San Manuel, more than $500.
Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed, since they've left the room at this point. Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we pulled it so we could see for transparency's sake, as well as, why did we not allocate the funds correctly last time?
So my understanding was this was, let me see, on this particular one...
I just want for the public to know why we're back here again.
So on this particular one, this was, oh, okay. I'll defer to, to the captain.
Good evening, everyone. So there was a budgetary oversight, why this didn't, these funds weren't carried over into the new adopted budget this fiscal year.
So that'll be like $800,000 into this year, '25, '26?
Correct. The way the funds were given to the city, to the department, it was heavy in the first year, and that was to purchase vehicles. But we had purchased vehicles with funding from another San Manuel grant a few years earlier. So the way the contract was written, we can then use that funds anytime throughout the duration of the grant period, which will be in a couple of years, because the vehicles we previously had purchased are still in service.
That's interesting. Okay, thank you. I'll move to approve.
Any other?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Last comments? No, okay. The city clerk, Madam City Clerk, if we could...
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero with Councilmember Sanchez, Councilmember Sharette, and Mayor Tran recusing themselves on the item.
Thank you very much. It doesn't look like there are any other pulls, but at this time, we'll invite our colleagues back to the, to the dice.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Thank you, council. All right, that concludes the consent calendar. We will now move on to discussion items. Item 17, approval of the loan and regulatory agreements between the city of San Bernardino and East Street Veterans Apartments, LP, a California Limited Partnership, and Ward Two. Could we begin with staff's presentation?
This has got to be approved. I move approval.
Yes, I propose. Veterans stay next week.
This is for a veteran's home, it's a good project.
It's a great project. I do have a question.
And we've got to move approval, so I move approval.
Great staff presentation. There's a motion by Councilmember Sharette, and a second... There's a motion by Councilmember Charette and a second by Councilmember Ortiz.
Do we have any questions? I can't answer any questions.
And Councilmember Abara?
Yes, so the funding that we're giving them, is there a deadline for them to utilize the funds?
No, because it is the low mod and the permanent local housing allocation. So there, there are some deadlines, but they're, they're pretty far out.
Okay, just want to make sure. I, I know this has been a long time coming for U.S. vets, and I'm glad to see all the different funding sources that they went to help build this project. I know back in, a couple of years back, I was very concerned with their project being right there on East Street because of all the crime we were having back then. But of course, with Chief Goodman and how he turned around the whole police force or response times, I'm a little bit more confident that they'll be in a safer environment than how it used to be on East Street before. So, yes, I'll be approving you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Any further comments? There's a motion, second, please call for the votes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff, for all the great work for veterans' housing. Moving on to, yes, for veterans. Moving on to item 18, introduce, read by title only, and waive further reading ordinance number MC 1656, amending section 8.24.100 of chapter 8.24 of Title Eight of the San Bernardino Municipal Code relating to the Construction and Demolition Debris Recycling Program. Could we begin with the staff's presentation?
Move to approve.
There's a motion, there's a second, and there's a question by Councilmember Ortiz.
How does this apply to the OXPO?
It does not. This actually deals with current construction and demolition projects. It would not apply to OXPO.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Councilmember Sanchez?
Yeah, this is for diversion, diversion. So if there was demolition on site, like, for example, the Mount Vernon Bridge, the Carousel Mall, the Law Office on D and Second, that were all crush-on-site locations that have all happened in the last couple of years, the diversion of that material into crushing it and using it as fill goes towards that 65% state mandate.
Yes, it could.
Yeah, but you're right. I guess you're right about OXPO. But what it does is a lot of that diversion is done through crushing on site.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilman Ortiz?
Okay, so again, does this apply to the OXPO?
It does not, because this is a pile of debris that is currently in place. This program that we're bringing forward to you in the ordinance amendment is actually for any kind of construction or demolition waste that would be generated from new development. So if we have a building that is being torn down, they would be required to prepare a waste management plan, submit fees, and we would monitor where the material is. And we're encouraging that they use the BURTEC facility as part of the program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. There's a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, who was the second for this? I have Sanchez as the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Canas, seconded by Councilmember Sanchez.
Okay. Councilmember Sanchez?
I'm sorry, it was the other way around. Motion by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilmember Canas. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, staff. Moving on to be, to items to be considered for future meetings.
I need to read the title again.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Ordinance number MC 1656, amending section 8.24.100 of chapter 8.24 of Title Eight of the San Bernardino Municipal Code relating to the Construction and Demolition Debris Recycling Program.
Thank you. We will now move on to items to be considered for future meetings. We have three items.
Mayor.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, I'd like to approve all three as a slate. Move to approve.
I'll second.
And there's a second by Councilmember Abara. If no further comments, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Abara?
Yes.
Mayor Potem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for swiftly moving city business along. We will now move on to mayor city council update. Councilmember Abara, do you have any announcements or updates to provide?
Yes, last week, I actually went to one of those residents that Mr. Luis Ojeda mentioned, and I want to tell this to the public. Code enforcement is out there. They're citing homes that are not in compliance. But if you need help, contact our city staff. Let them know if you have issues. I was so happy to see this family's home being rehabbed by the volunteers. This is one of those things that, like Luis said, as the founder of We Are the Change, he was able to acquire, have a group of volunteers, different businesses come together to help this family in need. It's a, it's a working husband with two little girls. He has his wife. Last year, his mother-in-law passed away, and the father-in-law is dealing with Alzheimer's. So they were in a really tight situation that they couldn't address the issues. And luckily, our code enforcement and he was, they were able to talk. And, you know, Luis reached out to our code enforcement. Are there any families in need of rehabbing their homes? And this is one of those top stories that our code enforcement recommended that the volunteers help. It's a very touching story. The little girls were happy. They finally have a backyard to play in. And the mom, she said, yesterday was the first time in a long time that I've had coffee in my backyard. And those are, that's what we're trying to improve in the quality of life. And for anybody else, if you're having tough situations with your homes, contact our city staff. We'll work something out. And I'm happy to announce that, that families, whatever fees they had accrued, they were dismissed, so they didn't have to worry. That would have been a further burden on the father. But, you know, I want to thank groups like Luis Ojeda, We Are the Change, and everybody else. He mentioned JLU, RR, Triple H. They, they did an excellent job with the family's house, so, thank you. And that's, that was a very touching story, and I wanted to share it to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Canas?
And I will piggyback after, after Councilmember Abara. I had the opportunity to go and support her in her ward and join that effort. We Are the Change, San Bernardino, is a group that has long been in our city. Luis Ojeda, the founder, came to the city of San Bernardino. And what I appreciate most is, rather than seeing all the challenges and the problems that the city had, he saw the great, the good in the city and its people, and stepped into action. And he coalesces a community. He brings us together, unifies us, including counsel, so that we can really change the trajectory of our city by doing projects like what he did. So I want to commend him, all the volunteers at We Are the Change. It was crazy. We had people from Riverside, social media influencers out there, all just really with a sincere, genuine passion for wanting to help community. And that's what it's about. You know, I always talk about the bridge for the council and the community. It really is a team effort. We're one team. It's not the left side versus the right side. We really are Team San Bernardino. So, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Abara. I know, I got to witness her when she was on the other side of this council many years ago. And now seeing her as a council member, that's why it's an honor for me to support her because I know she, like many of us here, truly, genuinely also cares about community, and it shows in everything that she does. So thank you for letting me be a part of that moment in your ward. I also want to give a huge shout-out to the Cajon Football Team. I'm a little biased, that is my alma mater. But they are now the seven-time CBL champions, and they are off to the CIF playoffs. So go Cajon Cowboys! I hope the community can come out, continue to support them, catch some football games. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilmember Sanchez?
I'd like to, as my announcements bring up, a couple of the Garcia Centers events that I'd like to report on. November 15th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Garcia Center's 10-year Community Celebration of the Garcia Center. There will be live music, DJ vendors, and demos. On November 29th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., the Mercado 536, located at the Garcia Center's Shop Local Market for holiday gifts. And lastly, December 13th, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Creative Entrepreneurial Business Mixer at the Garcia Center. Two business panels, creative activities, as well as local vendors will be there. So stop by for those, one of those three events or all three.
Thank you. Councilwoman Canas?
Sorry. I'm, I'm going to pick on you, Councilmember Sanchez, because I think as council members, we don't brag about ourselves enough and toot our own horn. So I'm going to kind of make you toot your horn a little bit. I mentioned a few council meetings ago that he is now the Secretary of the San Bernardino International Airport, and I have the pleasure of sitting on the board with him. And I can't take credit for what we recently approved and is being accomplished at that airport, because I am new. However, he is not. Him, as well as Councilmember Charette and Mayor Tran, you also formally sit on the board. They had the privilege of sitting on that board. And there's some really awesome things that are transpiring at our international airport. So if you don't mind, Theodore, can you please share the recent? Thank you.
Yes, we were able to secure funding in the amount of $6 million for a high-end facility that will, will be at the home of a five-star restaurant, a commercial kitchen, which will entice more commercial flights out of our San Bernardino Airport. So it's, it's a huge thing. I've worked with staff. There'll be a presentation in the next couple weeks, one of the next couple meetings. And it's, it's really not just, some people might, might leave here thinking, oh, it's just a restaurant. No, what this does is, this actually is a huge step in, in making, enticing more commercial airlines to giving a second look to our airport. And to have more commercial flights out of San Bernardino would be huge for us. We have flights right now, some were seasonal, but we do have a permanent fixture, flights to San Francisco as well as Utah. Sometimes we have flights out to Arizona. Sometimes we have a couple flights seasonally out to the East Coast. But with something like this, with an asset this large, a project this ambitious, we will, I am sure, get more commercial flights to start departing and arriving at our San Bernardino Airport.
Thank you. Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, mayor. So we've been out for two weeks. I've been doing a lot. CSUSB, I attended their legislative briefing for student success during challenging times. So really good to have the conversation with the Palm Desert Campus and the San Bernardino Campus about the issues that we're facing with the shutdown. We looked throughout the CSU system to lose around 751 possible work-study programs, which means that our students will be affected in losing their jobs at the Cal State level. So being a part of those conversations and looking to be able to bridge those gaps or super importanting through all of our, our efforts and organizations. I was able to participate in the principal for the day for the school district. I got to be, quote-unquote, "the principal of Pacific High School", which was so super amazing. I think the things that they're doing over there are just fantastic. I got to go to a college career fair day over at San Andreas, and that is a continuation school that is just, that you wouldn't even know. Like, if the, the idea of a continuation school is just, it's just a high school with just the most amazing kids who are finding their pathways on, and road to success. So I just thought that was great. And I want to thank Jade Smith for having me on campus. And then Halloween was off the hook in the Seventh Ward. First of all, thank you guys for all the free candy. That was great. Just the, the community up and down Valencia, throughout my neighborhood, on Mountain View, like, it, just so good to see the kids out. And, and even more so that there was no negative reporting. No one was hurt, no one was hit. There was nothing but just a really good time. So I, I love to see that within our, our community. Was able to attend the Community Action Partnership's 60th Anniversary Gala. That was wonderful and a really great time. And then I did a bunch of other stuff, too. But what I want to make sure I don't forget, oh, yesterday, it was so cool to do the Salvation Army Red Kettle Kickoff. I really just want to extend my gratitude to our staff for, I, I... One of the best things we ever did was move in the direction of working with the Salvation Army. And had, it, there had been hurdles, and I, you know, miss, miss, misses quite a bit in that area. And so to be able to come from last year to this year and see that type of improvement, I really hope, you know, and I hear there are greater opportunities for us to partner and be, and for the Salvation Army to become a cornerstone in our community. And so I'm excited about that. And a sad note, though, a formidable force of the Seventh Ward, Ms. Barbara Babcock has passed away. And if, I don't know, like, all I remember Barbara, when I first got to this city, is her being in, like, full African garb, giving public comments. And she just, whether you supported what she said or she didn't, she said it. And so she has gone to meet Jesus, and I just, if we could, I'm, just give a minute of silence or close out in her honor tonight. And I just want to extend my thoughts and prayers to her family for this very, very interesting, nice, nice-to-me woman. So that's it, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Mayor Potem?
Yes, thank you. It seems as though I was also, just like a few other councilmembers, contacted by Mr. Ojeda regarding the code enforcement issue and, and the things with, you know, especially with seniors, not being able to either have the physical or financial ability to be able to correct some of those issues. So I, I certainly want to continue to support being very proactive with code enforcement. But if, if there's a senior out there who finds himself with, you know, either physical limitations or financial limitations, to please reach out because there, there is an organization that's ready to coordinate, you know, some help and support with correcting some of those issues. So please, I encourage you to reach out. I feel like I'm getting some feedback. It just sounds like I'm getting feedback. It's throwing me off. But I, I also had the opportunity, a couple Fridays ago, I attended the, the community stakeholders meeting over at the Garcia Center. As mentioned earlier by Michael and Miriam, who are doing a great job out there as well. I applaud you for doing the, you know, the work that you're doing there. I encourage you to continue doing the great work. But it was, it was an opportunity to, to meet and hear some of the many cultural stakeholders, businesses, and different organizations that are operating in the city of San Bernardino. And, and the meeting was primarily for a semifinalist visit from the State's Arts Council to designate the, a portion of the East Street Corridor as a statewide cultural district here in San Bernardino. And what this, this designation will, will do is preserve and support the advancement of our local culture here in San Bernardino as well. And so I applaud you for the work that you're doing, Mr. City Manager. He was there present as well. Councilmember Theodore Sanchez, the mayor's, the mayor was represented there as well. And so I thank you all for being there, and I applaud you for your efforts. Michael, Miriam, for, for the work that you're doing there. You're doing great work, and I wish you all the best. And I hope that we can continue to partner up and, and see how we can work together on, on helping, helping you all achieve this, this goal as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. I have, uh, abundant list of things that I've done over the past two weeks, but I'll try to keep it short. So Thursday, October twenty-third, I was able to participate for, uh, principal for a day at King Middle School. So it's incredible to see the work that, uh, Principal Caius has been, has been doing at that middle school, and how he turned, has turned things around and just fostered an environment of, like, welcoming, uh, with, like, staff and stu- with his faculty and students, so shout-out to them. Uh, Friday, October twenty-fourth, I was able to, uh, go attend the SBVC Foundation President's Luncheon and see all the incredible things that Valley College is doing, Valley Up, Walmart trunk-or-treat later that evening at Hallmark Parkway. It was great to see Lieutenant Chaveria and our West Side Lieutenant, West District Lieutenant, over there celebrating with Walmart and our community cap's SBC, uh, sixtieth anniversary gala. Uh, on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, I was able to attend the Fourth Annual Day of the Dead Celebration at the Garcia Center. So incredible event, oh, great turnout. And it's always, uh, kinda like a double-edged, uh, when you're not able to find parking. So it, it, it's like, it's a good thing and a bad thing. It's like good, because there's a lot of people showing up, but bad for me, because I gotta, like, park far away. Uh, later that day, went to the Inspiration Youth Program Fall Festival. And then, uh, on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, attended the grand opening of the I, of IPEX by Iliaxis over on the northern end of my district. And then shortly, attended the grand opening of the Pacum-Pacum Welcome Center here in our beautiful city, San Bernardino. Later, Thursday, October thirtieth, Dia de los Muertos Celebration at KBCR. Incredible way that they just work together with community to get things done. And they, they partnered with Jarritos and had free Jarritos drinks, like, for, for community, also, like, free bread. And it was just a collaborative effort. Uh, on Friday, October thirty-four, uh, thirty-first, I attended the Francis Grace Cardinal Child Development Center Ribbon Cutting, another great accomplishment by our school district. Sunday, November second, Dia de los Muertos fundraiser for the Atlas Program. It was a sip and paint. I did not sip, but I did paint. And, uh, the, this program, it's really to allow our, our youth and their families and the, an opportunity for them to achieve their, their education, like, if they're going through homelessness and what have you. And then, later on, I was able to attend the, uh, city Dia de los Muertos event at Court Street Square. Shout-out to our Parks Department, always putting a spectacular event. Like, you guys are ki- killing it. Then today, Sunday, November fifth, I, uh, attended the Career Day at Teamsters Local Nineteen Thirty-Two. So thirteen hundred students attending that Career Day and just walking around, all from Riverside County, San Bernardino County, and just exposing them to incredible job opportunities that we have here at the county of San Bernardino. And that's right about it.
Thank you, Councilor Flores. That's a lot. Councilor Charette?
That's plenty, Mario. When do you sleep? Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I too, um, a, a lot of what, what I'm gonna say, about three items here have already been mentioned tonight, but I might elaborate a little bit on them. Um, I too attended the Community Action Partnership, uh, sixtieth anniversary dinner, uh, a, a week or so ago. It was, uh, well-attended, and, uh, that's a great organization that provides a lot of, uh, services to the community. I too was at the Pacum-Pacum, Paxum-Paxum, uh, grand opening up here on E Street. What a beautiful building. I hate to admit it, uh, I knew that building was going up, but I don't typically drive in that area, drive down E Street. And when I pulled up to that building, I, I thought, this thing just went up overnight. Obviously, it's been going up for a while, but it's a, a gorgeous, stunning building. And, uh, of course, they're expanding the, across the street, and, and they're doing a marvelous job. They're employing three hundred people in that building. Uh, so, uh, kudos to the school district for what they're doing in our community. And then I really wanna, uh, take an opportunity to, uh, thank, kind of on behalf of the Salvation Army. I too was at last night's, uh, dinner, Red Kettle, uh, Red Kettle Kickoff for the Salvation Army to, uh, get the bells out there and, uh, the buckets at Stater Brothers. And we hope that you'll all stick a buck or two in those, uh, this year. They're trying to do that this year with all volunteers, because, uh, they were paying people to ring those bells outside. Uh, and it turned out that they were, it was costing them more to pay people to, to do the work than they were making. So, um, if you're interested in volunteering, um, I'll be happy to help you get in contact with them, but you can contact the Salvation Army. But I wanted to personally recognize, I do sit on the advisory board of the Salvation Army, and, um, was there, um, as, uh, a member of the city, but also as a member of the, um, advisory board. And I did wanna take particular, thank, uh, my colleagues, uh, Mayor Tran, Councilwoman, um, Ortiz, our city manager. And particularly, I wanna recognize, uh, we were, uh, we were given the award as Partner of the Year with, with Salvation Army. And I, we as a city deserve it, but it really goes to the staff. And, um, also attending last night on behalf of, of the homeless and the Housing Division was Cassandra Circe, uh, Tina Perez, and Gabriela Leon. And they all deserve, and they really are the ones that earned this award that our city can be very proud of. And I too am a big supporter of the Salvation Army in our community, and will do all I can, I hope, along with my colleagues, to, um, help them succeed here in town. Uh, and that's really it for, for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Potem?
Thank you. It'll be really quick. I, I completely forgot and left out at the, at the Garcia Center. Present also was our Parks Department with Vanessa as well. Thank you for your presence and all the work that you do, uh, right now as well. So thank you for your presence there. I forgot to, to recognize you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We are busy, y'all. Um, I, I won't try to repeat a lot of these. I was been with my colleagues at some of these events, uh, too, but, so, um, October sixteenth, I attended the Transportation Authority Metro Valley Study Session. On the eighteenth, uh, along with many, many of my colleagues here, we joined hundreds of volunteers at the Downtown Neighborhood Association, DNA, give you a shout-out. Citywide cleanup. These cleanups will be planned monthly, and I hope to see you all joining. And the next cleanup is the fourth Saturday of every month. On October twenty-fifth, attended the city, uh, Trick or Treat Halloween Spectacular at Alguin Park with my kids.